Good evening. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. The open session part of the meeting will begin at around 7:00 p.m. Public comment on closed session items. Before going into closed session, the board is available for public comment on closed session agenda items. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on closed session agenda items tonight?
Yes, we have one hand raised. Tony Parisi, go ahead, please.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Tony Parisi, and I am speaking on behalf of an outraged and exhausted community to address closed session agenda items number six, initiation of litigation, and number seven, existing litigation, NVUSD versus California State Board of Education. We have simply had enough of this NVUSD administration and Board of Trustees frivolous spending of tax dollars while simultaneously promoting a bond agenda to raise additional funding. This horrendous two-and-a-half-year ordeal is the direct result of misdirection by NVUSD administration, ostensibly to close one middle school, which then additionally twilighted a long champion in SEL project called River Charter Middle School. This administration and board's displeasure with their constituent community's desire and demonstrated need for this type of middle school environment has resulted in a ridiculous litany of misinformation, scare tactics, litigation, and embarrassment in meeting after meeting. This newest lawsuit against the Napa County Board of Education and Superintendent Nemco is simply the final straw. Despite our acknowledging the need for improvements in our aging schools, our community will not support any NVUSD bond measure, nor this administration or Board of Trustees, while this reckless and unnecessary spending of current budget dollars continues with these lawsuits. We will loudly proclaim the need for change during the next election season. We ask this board to acknowledge these frivolous actions and end these lawsuits now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parisi. Are there any more comments?
There is no further public comment.
Okay, well, thank you. And the board will now adjourn into closed session. Good evening. My name is Cindy Water, and this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. Our interpreters are Francisco Mesa and Fabiola Valencia. One of the interpreters will now translate the directions on our English channel, so our Spanish-speaking families may hear the instructions.
Muy buenas noches. La interpretación en español está disponible para la reunión virtual de la Junta Directiva del Distrito Escolar Unificado de Napa Valley. En un momento, en su computadora aparecerá un icono de un mundo terráqueo. Por favor, haga clic en donde dice Spanish o español y elija su idioma. Si está usando una tableta o celular, busque tres puntitos desde la aplicación Zoom y baje y abajo, verá donde dice Language Interpretation o Interpretación de Idioma y seleccione español. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us tonight for our NVUSD board meeting. E1, Report on Closed Session. Trustee Chu, do you have a report on closed session agenda items?
I do. E1, Report on Closed Session Items. D1, Student Discipline. With respect to every item of business to be discussed in closed session pursuant to ED Code 35146 and 48912, Section 20, Government Code, Section 49060 and 49078, and the Family Rights and Privacy Act, USC Section 1232G, Student Matters. A, Expulsions. The board recommended the expulsion of student 03072024A.
Move to expel.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, okay. Moved by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Jankowicz. We need a roll call vote.
Trustee Water?
Yes.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzales Mari?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
B, Readmitted Expulsions. The board recommends for the readmission from expulsion for student 02272020G.
Move to readmit.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Trustee Gracia, a second by Trustee Gonzales Mari. Roll call vote.
Trustee Water?
Yes.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzales Mari?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Unanimous, and...
Number two. The board recommends for the readmission from expulsion for student 3172022C.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Trustee Gracia, a second by Trustee Gonzales Mari. Roll call vote.
Trustee Water?
Yes.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzales Mari?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
And I also have an update report from February 26, 2024, closed session regarding initiation of litigation. As the public is aware, the NVUSD Board of Education authorized the initiation of litigation during a closed session meeting held on February 26, 2024. When we announced this action taken, we stated that the particulars would be disclosed when the litigation commenced. We filed the complaint yesterday against the County Board of Education and the county superintendent for breaking the law and violating their fiduciary duties. As noted by the California Department of Education in a charter school FAQ on their website, Education Code Section 47605.6A2 expressly prohibits the conversion of an existing public school, including an active charter school, to a countywide charter school. Yet, this is exactly what happened at the county board's March 5 meeting. The trustees voted to approve a new countywide My Commiss Charter Middle School, knowing that the existing My Commiss Charter Middle School will simply be converting into this new countywide school in order to circumvent a trial court decision against them that they are appealing. The countywide charter school will be operating in the same facility with the same staff and students under the oversight of the same board. Simply put, this conversion school is illegal. There are numerous other reasons in the complaint outlining why the March 5, 2024 decision of the county board was arbitrary, capricious, entirely lacking in evidentiary support, contrary to established law and public policy, and constituted a complete abdication of their fiscal oversight fiduciary duties to all school districts in this county. We hold the county superintendent to the same level of responsibility as the county board for the March 5, 2024 decision because the county board delegated its responsibility to make good faith findings in compliance with the law to her and her staff at the Napa County Office of Education. She failed the county board and the greater Napa community with respect to these delegated duties and through these failures violated the law. Copies of this complaint are available upon request. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Chu. Now we'll move on to E2, Flag Salute. Will Napa High School Principal Ainsworth lead us in the flag salute?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. E3, The meeting is livestreamed and recorded via Zoom and will be archived on the district YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda item, the archived video can be referenced on the district's webpage at nvusd.org. The process for public comment can also be found on the district's webpage. E4, Approval of Agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second? Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, E5, Approval of Minutes. A, February 3, 2024.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, first is Gracia, second is Trustee Jankowicz. Okay, student trustee, you can vote. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, February 8, 2024.
Move to approve.
Okay, also, first by motion by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Jankowicz. All in favor?
Aye.
C, February 10, 2024. Trustees Chu and Gonzales Mari were absent.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Jankowicz. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Thank you. And no nays, so... Okay, February 15, 2024.
Move to approve.
I will second.
Okay, motion by Gracia, second by Jankowicz. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Nope. February 17, 2024.
Move to approve.
I will second.
First by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Jankowicz. All in favor?
Aye.
Any noes? Nope. Okay, great. That one passes. And F, February 26. My, what a lot of minutes. 2024.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Jankowicz. All in favor?
Aye.
None? Okay, passes. Terrific. Recognition of Visitors and Employee Organizations. Dr. Masetti, do we have any visitors in attendance?
Yes, online I see that we have our current CSCA president, Mr. Hector Gallegos. Can we please move him over? And would you like to address the board, Mr. Gallegos?
Yeah, good evening. Good evening, board members, Dr. Masetti. And I can't really see who else is there, but whoever's there present, I just wanted to say good evening and, you know, thank you guys for what you do. These last few months, I've learned a lot, and I really, really appreciate everything that you guys are doing for the school district. And, you know, you guys motivate me to possibly one day, you know, strive to sit where you guys are sitting. So it's coming from, you know, from the bottom of my heart that, you know, I think it's something that I want to strive to do. But I really, really appreciate everything that you guys do. And once again, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership, Mr. Gallegos. That's all for tonight that I see online in terms of special guests.
Deb's here.
Anyone here?
Oh, I didn't see her. Oh, there she is. There's a lot of people. I'm sorry. Our president of NVEA, the Napa Valley Educators Association, Ms. Deb St. Clair is in the boardroom.
I know, I always forget. Good evening, board. Superintendent Dr. Masetti. I forgot where I was for a second. Zoom class. No, just kidding. Again, I want to thank you for everything you do. I want to echo what Mr. Gallegos was just saying. We appreciate all of your support. And just a little update. Napa Valley Educators Association Exec Board is going to be doing a listening tour with all school sites. We received a grant from CTA, so we'll be visiting all school sites and talking to every member individually, hopefully. That's the plan within... before the end of the school year. So it'll be interesting to see what everyone has to say. So thank you very much.
Before we proceed, we have to do the roll call. We forgot to say who's here and who's absent.
I skipped over something extremely important. We didn't do a roll call. An official roll call.
Oh. Beginning.
At the beginning of the meeting.
Ms. Morales.
My fault. Okay, so Ms. Morales, could you take a role for us?
Yes. Student Board Member McGrath?
Present.
Trustee Water?
Present.
Trustee Reiser?
Present.
Trustee Chu?
Present.
Trustee Gracia?
Present.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Present.
Trustee Gonzales Mari?
Present.
Or I'm present. Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize. All right, now we're going to F. Now we're moving to F, which is my favorite part of the meeting, as I say at every meeting. Students of the Month recognition. Number one will be American Canyon High School. Will Principal Goff please present the Students of the Month for ACHS? And this is going to be on Zoom.
Is Mr. Goff online?
No. Hi, this is Theo Dyxall, Assistant Principal. I'm stepping in to report on the two Students of the Month for American Canyon High School.
Great, thank you for being here. You can proceed.
So the two Students of the Month this month are Ohani Castillo, as well as James Andino. Ohani was named Student of the Month by one of our teachers as he has consistently maintained an impressive GPA, including twice being on the Lone Wolf Honor Roll, the highest level of academic achievement. He's a conscientious student who works hard, contributes to class discussion, and collaborates well with his classmates. He always greets his teachers and classmates with a smile, and he's a joy to have in class. The second student is James Andino. But first, I want to let Ohani say a few words himself, introducing himself to the board as well as the superintendent and the members who are here. Ohani, did you want to say a few words?
Yeah, I can, I can. So first off, my name is Ohani Castillo. I'm 17. I played sports all throughout American Canyon. I played football four years, voted captain among my peers. And I'd just like to just thank my family and my teachers for voting me here. And some of the achievements that I've gotten while playing football were I was voted a captain, of course. And then for my two years on varsity, I was voted first team all-league. So I feel that it's a major achievement for myself and for our school. And as you stated, for school achievements, I was voted Lone Wolf two years. So that's straight 4.0. I have taken AP classes, and I have been on honor roll all four years throughout high school. And for some of my plans after high school, I plan on attending a four-year college to pursue my passion of business marketing management. So I would love to just work for a company and just be like the head runner for marketing. And I feel like that's just a little about me and what I want to do in my future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ohani. The second and final Student of the Month for American Canyon High School is James Andino. James is a senior as well, who served on a number of clubs. He's performed academically well in all of his classes. He's helpful towards other students in his directed studies class when they are in need of assistance and always shows a positive attitude towards school. He participated in the NVUSD Summer Teacher Mentorship Program during the summer of 2023, and he'd like to become a math teacher in his future career. James will be going to Napa Valley Community College after graduation, and then he'd like to transfer to San Francisco State University to earn a bachelor's degree in mathematics, as well as his teaching credential. James exemplifies what it means to be an American Canyon High School Wolf, and we couldn't be more proud of him. James, if you're on, if you'd like to say a few words as well. Doesn't seem like he's online, so back to you, board. Thank you so much.
Sorry, everyone. Looks like he's on his way over. One second. James, are you on?
Yes. Oh, hello.
Go ahead.
Hello, my name is James Andino. I am a senior at American Canyon High School. I have been described as both charismatic and kind. I am interested in mathematics and have been taking calculus to continue to challenge myself. I have an interest in teaching. To explore this path, as you were told, I did a teaching mentorship program over the summer of 2023. I have another interest in photography and art, so I plan to explore that while attending college. And as you were told, while attending college, I would like to major in mathematics. And in doing so, I would also like to get a teaching degree. And after that, I plan on teaching middle school or high school. Lastly, I would like to thank all the teachers who helped me get to where I am today. Thank you for listening.
And thank you. Great. And now, Napa High School's Principal Ainsworth will introduce his Students of the Month.
So good evening. Thank you for having us. President Water, this is my favorite part of my job, too. Like, getting up to be up here every month is pretty incredible. But tonight, we get to honor two students that I can't, and Napa High can't take sole credit for. They're products of an amazing system that works well for our students. They're both NVLA kids, went to Harvest, our DLI students, and are now finishing up as juniors their ESA program at Napa High School. Their accomplishments go well beyond academics, as you're going to hear tonight. They are future leaders. They are future incredible people that I'm thrilled to get to work for one day. So our first Student of the Month is Alina Seja. So she's going to come up. You're going to hear from Alina, so... She's just this incredible leader, this incredible presence on campus. She walks into a room and smiles, and everybody feels her warmth and welcome and is ready to follow wherever she's ready to take us. I have no doubt that she's what we would all imagine Dr. Masetti was like as a junior in high school in every way. And so I'm going to let her come up and share her story.
I have a lot of thank yous to give, so I'm sorry if I go over time. But my name is Alina Seja Delgado. I'm a junior at Napa High School. First, I'd like to thank you all, the school board, for this amazing honor. I truly am extremely excited to have been thought of for this level of recognition. I'd also like to recognize my parents and my entire family for all of the support they've surrounded me with my entire life. They've always been my biggest fans, and they are my favorite people, especially my mom, who is my greatest inspiration. She's the reason I feel capable of doing all that I do and the reason that I have continued to challenge myself to achieve higher. For elementary school, I attended Napa Valley Language Academy, which was the greatest experience to learn in two languages and be educated by teachers who value all parts of my identity. I continued my dual-emergent education at Harvest Middle School, and I am currently at Napa High, where I'm surrounded by an amazing community of teachers, staff, and students. Dr. Ainsworth and Mr. Grebe have both been incredible role models to me and supported me in my preparation when I was chosen to be a semifinalist for the position of student representative on the California State Board of Education. Mr. Grebe originally recommended me for the position, and him and Dr. Ainsworth spent countless hours the week of producing my speech and even interrupting classes to practice. During this time, I was introduced to Dr. Masetti, who I immediately upon meeting admired greatly. She helped me understand my potential and has also become a very important figure in my life. Although I did not advance from being a semifinalist, I learned so much and had the opportunity to participate at the four-day conference as a member of the California Associated School Councils. Last year, I was awarded Grizzly of the Year, and I have participated in several of NVUSD's guiding coalitions. And this year, I'm on the Student Advisory Council. I have also co-organized the Dia de los Muertos celebration at Napa High for the past two years. I am next year's student body president, member of... Oh, I am the Mecha Club president, which is the Chicano Empowerment Club. I am the Northern California Ambassador for the Chicano-Latino Youth Leadership Project. I'm badminton captain. This is my second year. Sorry. And I am a color guard majorate. And I am extremely passionate about all of these. My experience in color guard and badminton over the past few years has enriched my high school experience immensely. I have found a sense of community amongst people equally as passionate as I am about continually improving as both a member of these extracurriculars and as a student. My absolutely favorite classes have been my Spanish classes and both Spanish speakers and AP with Ms. Ochoa, Ms. Vega, and Ms. Colorado. Learning about themes related to ethics and religion and culture have been endlessly fascinating, thanks to these amazing teachers. And this year, I have enjoyed AP US History with Mr. Gassner, who shows up at class at 7:30 every morning with the exact same enthusiasm. After high school, I hope to go straight to a four-year university here in California and study something along the lines of sociology, administration, and education, and Chicano Studies. I'd love to attend UC Berkeley, which is where my mom went, or UC San Diego, where my sister is currently studying. And once more, I'd like to thank everyone who has supported me in my journey throughout my life and throughout my education, and thank you so much for this honor.
Just for the record, Dr. Ainsworth, she blows me out of the water, so...
Our next Student of the Month is Nico Lopez, and I think the best way I can describe her is through the words of Mr. Cooper, our choir director, who just called her "the heartbeat of our musical theater course." She's an incredible performer. She's an incredible performer. We've been incredibly blessed to have her talents at Napa High School, where she just, I'm gonna let you speak for yourself, but it's the, it's her ability to perform naturally and be on stage and, and take on characters i- is truly a gift. And so I hope you get a chance to see her in the next year and a half, uh, one for performance, or his performances, and Nico, you ready? Okay.
Well, first off, first off, I would like to say, I don't know how I'm gonna be able to top Alina. But anyways, hello, my name is Nico Lopez Magro, and it is such a huge honor to be standing in front of you tonight. I'd first like to thank my lovely parents and supportive, supportive extended family. We all know I could not have made it here without them. Thank you all, and thank you, Dr. Masetti, for being here and giving me this recognition. I'd also like to thank a few teachers, Mrs. Patty Magro, my sixth-grade English teacher, and my grandmother. She taught me how to read before I even entered elementary school. Thank you to Mrs. Rosalinda Hurtado, my history teacher my freshman and sophomore year. She has cherished and nurtured me in a way that no other teacher has done before. She cares for all of her students with unbounding generosity. Thank you to Mr. Duncan Cooper, my choir teacher for the past two years. I have learned so much from him, and I continue to do so every day. He has made such a wonderful safe space for me and so many others. Even on my worst days, walking into the choir room makes everything else melt away. I started my academic journey at NVLA and then moved on to Harvest Middle School. I have been intertwined with different cultures and so many beautiful people because of the schools I've gone to. I ended up at Napa High School so I could continue with my, with the ESA program and receive my seal of biliteracy. I have found so much more to love at this high school than simply continuing my Spanish education. Due to my rigorous AP courses this year, I have fallen in love with the accumulation of knowledge. I now know that where, whatever my future holds, I want to keep learning every day. I have found much joy in the arts. Theater and choir give me such an amazing outlet to be creative. I'm currently a thespian officer of my troop, and I am also in Napa High's Chamber Choir. The performing arts are a huge part of my life, and I am so grateful for the opportunity to participate in them. I currently hold a 4.67 GPA, and I hope to attend a university such as Cal Berkeley, Santa Cruz, or Stanford to study literature and philosophy. I cannot wait for my higher education and to continue learning for the rest of my life. I am so proud of all eight and counting play productions I have participated during my high school career. I am also proud of being an honor roll student for the past five years. I owe so much to this academic community, and I cannot begin to express my gratitude for such an amazing education. My education, in which I take immense pride, is only the beginning of a journey to a lifelong, to lifelong learning and curiosity. Thank you all so much for your time, your kindness, and this honor.
Alina and Nico, extraordinary job this evening. We want to present you with some certificates and provide your families the opportunity to take some photos. So we'll start out with Alina coming up. That was wonderful. Thank you to all four students, and um, I would like to read, I'd like to read a speech from a student who was, who was honored last, last meeting but was unable to attend. And many of us went to his adult school graduation, and um, here's his speech. And you will remember, he read it at the graduation. And I cannot reproduce his enthusiasm and his brio, but I'll try to do my best. Good evening, everyone. My name is Eduardo Martinez, and I want to thank you all for attending our graduation ceremony, Student of the Month NVUSD Board Celebration. I'm going to try to keep this short and brief, to not take much of your time. Ten years ago, I thought the best thing for me was to drop out of school. I believed that if I got a job and worked my way up, I didn't need a diploma. And if you told me ten years ago that I would return to school one day, I would probably laugh and say, "You're crazy." Well, here I am, ten years later, but I did it. I'm here to tell you that it is never too late. You can accomplish anything you want to do, as long as you stay dedicated and make time for it. If there's anyone out there that's second guessing going back to school, this is your sign to go back. Make that move and break the cycle. I want to thank everyone at Napa Valley Adult Education. I appreciate all the help and motivation to keep going. I want to thank my girlfriend for always pushing me to do better and be a better me every day. And I want to thank my family for always supporting me. I want to dedicate this diploma to my father, who is present, and to my grandmother, who is no longer with us. I am the first one in my family to graduate high school, and we're going to college, baby. And like Larry June once said, "Good job. Good job, graduates. Keep going. Thank you." And thank you, Eduardo. I'm sorry you are not here in person. Okay, we now have, um, let's see, time for public comment on non-agenda items. Okay, in accordance with our bylaws, I want to remind the public that the board shall limit the total time for public input to 20 minutes. And um, do we, I'll ask for a show of hands online to see how many people are interested in making public comments. We may adjust the length of time you're allowed to speak based on the number of people interested in public comment tonight, in order to give as many people as possible an opportunity to speak in the time allotted. And please raise your hand now if you're interested in making public comment on non-agenda items.
Based on the hands that are raised, President Water, and the cards that we have in the room, we're able to give everyone three minutes.
Good.
So we're gonna start with people in the room. So here are the cards.
Okay, thank you. Okay, first person is Ariana Irvin.
Uh, okay, cool. Okay, hello. Uh, my name is Ariana, and I'm a Napa resident, a small business owner, and the mother of a rising kindergartner. Um, I spoke last month at the board meeting regarding my concerns related to the tech usage in the school district. Uh, since that time, myself, along with a small group of parents, have formed a coalition called Low Tech Napa. Our aim is to bring transparency to the tech usage across the district, along with making some changes for all schoolchildren, but specifically for our littlest ones. Today, I thought I would read a letter that we sent to all school board members, um, that I believe highlights our position really well. Since we last spoke at the board meeting, we've had the opportunity to speak with Matt Manning about the use of technology in classrooms and the amount of screen time that children at NVUSD are being exposed to. Based on our conversation with him, we learned that there has never been an audit of the schools or classrooms through the lens of technology usage. We believe this has led to an overuse of screens with less than the highest quality of educational programming, and that many parents are simply unaware of how much screen time their children have in school each day. For reference, screen time refers to iPads, Promethean boards used to show videos, movies at lunchtime, shows in class, and movie shows in the aftercare programs. We believe in public education and believe there are benefits to technology usage when used as a high-quality educational resource. We would encourage the district to look at the ways technology is currently being used and see if it matches up with data on screen usage, particularly for young children. Greater oversight by the district will lead to greater transparency and will allow for a more robust conversation around privacy concerns, headphone usage, screen isolation, and what truly qualifies as high-quality programming. Our goal is to work with the district to create the best educational environment we possibly can for our young learners. Our grassroots movement started by a small group of concerned parents, and we've collected over 100 signatures simply through word of mouth. Additionally, we have heard about many families that have opted out of NVUSD and are either sending their kids to private school, driving them long distance to other counties, or homeschooling because they share concerns about screen usage. As the district has an enrollment problem, it might be beneficial to look more closely at why parents are looking outside of the district. Thanks again for your time this evening, and let's work together to make some positive changes for our kids.
Thank you. Thank you. And um, our next speaker is Josh Scott.
Good evening. Uh, Josh Scott, also a Napa resident. I have three children in the school system. Well, one is gonna be here starting in the fall on the TK program. I'm also a teacher. I teach English at Solano Community College. I've taught there for 17 years. And over these years, I've heard just from, you know, hundreds, I'd say at this point, of students who have expressed sort of an overwhelming sense of mental health impact and other pieces that really relate, I think, in some ways to screen usage and the ways this really ballooned, especially during COVID and afterwards. Uh, my two older children, one's in middle school and one's currently in high school. And when they were in elementary school, the Promethean Board was on, most of the time, kids were learning how to read and were reading books on Chromebooks. When they were reading or doing math, often they were rewarded by uh, getting to adapt and work with avatars on, further on Chromebooks. And I think the teachers who were doing this had, you know, very good intention, often overwhelmed, large classrooms. I have, you know, a huge amount of respect for them. But same thing as what is already being articulated, hoping that the board could maybe hold a study session or something to really look at best policy regarding technology. And also to really give parents an opportunity to um, know exactly how much tech students are being exposed to, and also to be able to opt out as we understand is the best interest of our children. Thank you, and have a nice evening.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. And now we have Tiffany Hop.
Hi, thank you for hearing us tonight. Uh, my name is Tiffany Hop. I am a Napa resident, and I'm also the lead teacher and director of We Folk Play Garden, which is a nature-based early childhood program that I've been running here in Napa for 17 years. I have a large group moving on to TK and kindergarten this year, and um, I have to say, I, I stand here today a little disappointed to know that Universal TK has come around and all of the wonderful impacts that that can have for access and just economic stability for parents, and that I feel there's, you know, such a disconnect between what parents are sort of being offered and sold via your website and what they're hoping to expect when they walk into these classrooms, and then what they're seeing, and also what they're hearing from community members who have substitute taught, who, you know, also have children in these programs, and are just finding out that the accumulative, you know, uh, screen time during the day is much more than they're originally being told. My further concern is that I don't feel that there's a huge answer as to why we're leaning so hard into screen time for such a young group of children when such a huge amount of research is, points not only to questioning the value of screen time for the young child, but points out harm. So, as has been said, I'm really looking forward to being a part of the conversation and finding solutions. I also want to note that in 2020, I was part of um, a fellowship put on by Rockwood Leadership Institute for Early Childhood Care Providers that focused solely, you know, on inclusion and how to really raise up our, our early childhood programs. And not one of the curriculums that we, that we studied or any of the, you know, anything shared ever pointed to that technology was useful or needed to impact our early childhood children. And that moreover, no matter how many wonderful books you have and all of, all of the things that it really takes a human heart and a hu- and a human behind all of those things to, to create the impacts. So like I said, I am a district cheerleader to just bring on whatever change we need to, to lift it up. So thank you for hearing us tonight.
Thank you.
And thank you to Low Tech Napa.
Thank you. And um, our next speaker is Erin Sullivan.
Okay, thank you. To the NVUSD Board of Education Trustees, my name is Erin Sullivan. I have a PhD in biological psychology, specifically in developmental psychobiology, investigating the, the development of the brain and stress response. I'm also a tenured California Community College educator, and most importantly, I'm the parent of a four-year-old who will be entering TK in the fall. I'm here today to express my concerns over the amount of screen time exposure throughout NVUSD. The research is clear that increased screen time is negatively associated with self-esteem, creative thinking, and social emotional skills, all foundations of the TK program and beyond. Therefore, I have concerns about the Promethean Board and one-to-one device usage in grades TK to one. As a cognitive, as cognitive developmental psychologist Jean Piaget said, "Play is the work of children." This should be the emphasis of learning, particularly through age seven. In order to learn, children must physically interact with the world, and this is not adequately accomplished through a device. I request that children in TK to one be exposed to screens only on a very limited basis and not have access to one-to-one devices. After meeting with Matt Manning, along with other parents, we learned that there is not currently any monitoring or parental notification of device usage throughout NVUSD. Further, we were informed that there are mandated minimums of tablet usage beginning in kindergarten, but there are no upper limits to their usage. We were also told that there is not currently any independent empirical evidence to support the usage of tablets or Promethean boards in the classroom, although research is ongoing. I encourage NVUSD to institute screen time mandatory maximums that includes all screens that a child is exposed to throughout the school day and while in NVUSD aftercare. Further, these limits should be consistent with pediatric guidelines, which are not more than one hour per day total, according to the American Academy of Pediatrics. Further, parents should be informed of the amount of screen time, types of devices, and content their children has been exposed to daily, so that they are aware, and so that in-home adjustments may be made based on school usage that day. While my preference would be the elimination of screens and tablets through first grade, I understand NVUSD's financial investment and motivation to use them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Dustin Owen.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Hard to follow the PhD. My name is Dustin Owen. I'm a resident here in Napa. I want to give you guys my story of um, screen time and early childhood development. Uh, my daughter was two years old during COVID, and like all of us, I think we watched a lot of TV during that time. And the alarm bells started to go off for me when I started to notice I would lose her when we would watch stuff together. I would talk to her, and she wasn't there, and it really scared me a lot. So we started to implement some screen time restrictions and all that stuff. But I want to say that at the same time, my father was going through some pretty advanced dementia, and I would go visit him while he was in an assisted care facility. And one thing I noticed is, at the assisted care facility, every single person was watching TV that has dementia. I would talk to him, and I would have him for brief moments, and when I would lose him, it was when he would look up at the TV. And once that happened, he was gone. So that was pretty scary for me as a, as a father, and what, what it was causing my daughter to learn about the world, it was through this screen. So fast forward a couple of years, I, and me and my wife were touring uh, the schools in this district, and I won't name any of the names, but we went into a number of them, and I was absolutely crushed by what I saw, because in these classrooms, there's very little noise. There is silence, and I tried to make eye contact with some of these students. And they had their tablets, and it was impossible. So luckily for me, I have a friend that also went to Stonebridge, and immediately, I was very excited about the prospect. So luckily for me, my daughter got into Stonebridge, and we are absolutely enthralled with the entire program so far. And I don't know what I would have done if that had not happened. So like somebody else just said, we probably would have either gone to a private school or out of county. I don't really know. So I don't know what the solution is, but I just want to give you guys my story, and you guys can use it however you'd like. So thanks for your time.
Thank you. All right, our next speaker is Rachel Cohn, and is that, oops, I can't read the handwriting. But Rachel, there you are.
Hello, School Board. I'm Rachel Cohn Obett. I'm a culinary gardener, landscape designer, and a teacher, and I've also been involved briefly in uh, teaching the Small Scale Farming Program through the Adult Ed School here. Uh, my daughter is four years old. She's enrolled to start TK at West Park in August. I called the school and have not been able to get a tour. They couldn't tell me anything about, about how tech is used in the classrooms at their school through calling the office. This information should be available and disclosed to parents. I was also part of this meeting last week. Uh, yeah, I'm realizing with my own technological problems, I think this was my unedited version, but um, I was invited, I recently joined this campaign and was part of this, this meeting last week with Matt Manning, and I have been astonished to learn more about NVUSD's policies on tech in the classrooms. From what he told us, in TK, there actually is no tech policy. The only policy is that it must exist in the classroom. There must be iPads for every student in the classroom. There must be Promethean Board in every classroom. There's no requirement that the teachers use them, but there's also no limits on how they can be used, how much they can be used. they can be used, how much they can be used. This seems just totally unacceptable, and like, why money is being spent to put all this technology into TK classrooms with no, no restriction, no rules or no restrictions seems very, very inappropriate. I would think this money could be better spent for better teacher-to-student ratio, for more toys and experiences that encourage creative play, which is how kids learn at this age. Then he told us, as we heard, about how beginning in kindergarten, there's 20 minutes required iPad usage for every kid, four days a week, minimum, with no maximum on how much it, it could be used, as well as the Promethean boards that teachers are using for read-along books instead of just reading books to the kids, sometimes shows being watched, and then excessive amounts, or it seems like in, in situations, movies and shows are also being shown at recess and after care. Yeah, I'm, I'm thrown off by my lack of, my different version here. Okay, so, it seems there's no data to show how this is affecting kids' long-term academic and professional achievements, and why this, this introduction of tech, technology has happened, while there's lots of data that shows that this, the screen, too much screen time can have a negative effect on social and emotional well-being and should be very limited. In our meeting with Matt, he also shared that this technology was actually brought into the classrooms to create equity, but no explanation of how bringing iPads into classrooms actually creates equity. How does introducing young children to iPads and regu- unregulated use of screen time, plus the movies and shows at recess and aftercare, how does this increase, increase equity? We applied, I'm running out of time here. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So, is it Karen Van?
So, I'm speaking today as a parent of young children who will soon be eligible for the NVUSD school system. I'm also a former substitute teacher for NVSD for last year, and I also teach music privately. Whether my kids enter the NVUSD school system is contingent on the changes that this school board will make to its technology requirements in the coming years, especially in classrooms for the young students like TK and K. I believe in the underlying mission of public schools. I went to public schools growing up to bring children from all walks of life, of all colors, rich and poor, together under the same roof, and teach them how to work together to face the challenges of this world. But this divisive requirement that kindergartners use iPads for 80 minutes each week is actively working against that mission. As a former sub in Napa's public schools, I saw firsthand some of the damage that unrestricted access to this technology is having in classrooms on attention spans and on learning environments for Napa's young people. The only school I found myself leading engaged and attentive children was at Stonebridge, a charter that bars tech in its classroom until middle school. Eventually, I stopped subbing for the rest of the district, and I worked exclusively for Stonebridge because I found the experience of constant policing of children of all ages who were misbehaving on their gadgets, and frankly, who can blame them? I found this so deeply upsetting. Every single subbing experience that I had was characterized by dysfunctional technology and mostly disengaged children. The focus on technology was so intense, at it worst, at its worst, it superseded my ability to make connections with students through subject material. Local parents also clearly want less tech in their classrooms. As a private piano teacher, I am seeing more and more families dropping out of NVUSD to either homeschool or send their kids to private alternatives. The number of families in my studio that homeschool now has quadrupled since I started teaching just two years ago. Big tech's multimillion-dollar, multi-billion-dollar corporations are happily preying on school districts in the same way that fast food and highly-processed junk food brands infiltrated low-income areas with cheap, low-nutrient foods and what we now know today to be disastrous consequences. I would like to avoid that fate with technology, which has become the junk food for our brains. And so, I mean, this is why when asked whether his kids love the iPad, Apple co-founder Steve Jobs replied, "They haven't even used it." Those responsible for these technologies who live pretty close to here are well aware that they pose... Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Connor Esser.
Hi there, I'm Connor Esser. I'm a local Napa resident. I have a two-year-old who's going to be entering this system eventually, I do hope. I am a product of the public school system, and I am proud of it. I have enjoyed learning and the process that comes with that throughout my life. I am concerned, as many parents are, about the screen time that we are seeing and just kind of the inevitable intrusion in life that screens have. Yes, son. I, I got to see four young people tonight who were very excited about their educational experience, and they were all very, very articulate in the way they talked about how excited they were about their opportunities. I didn't hear one of them talk about how excited they were about iPads or tablets. I see nine adults to my left here, each of whom is in front of a, a screen, some of whom are taking handwritten notes on pads, others are scrolling, typing, doing something that might not be as engaged as you would want a student in a classroom to be. Given the fact that you have grown adults using screens to this effect, I think we can all understand the concern that parents would have with kids just being kind of fed screen time in a classroom educational setting. So, I, I would like to echo the, the concerns of the fellow parents who have come here before me, and, and we, we need to figure this out, and we need to have a, a plan, and there needs to be very clear guidance for the teachers, because the teachers are doing the best they can. And I know this. My brother is a teacher, his wife is a teacher, my mom is a professor. They do the best they can, but when we don't have guidance and we don't have set rules, and it's not clear what the school wants, the teachers are kind of left in the dark, and the kids are going to do what they do. So, it's kind of on us to be the adults in the room and put the, put the screens down and, and set our kids up for a better educational path. So, hopefully, we'll get some, some momentum in that direction. Thank you guys for this time.
Thank you, Mr. Esser. Do we have any online comments? Mr. Michael, do we have any online comments?
Yes, we have three. The first speaker is Mikey Kelly.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Letter on behalf of my wife, Nicole Kelly, who holds a degree in international business and is a professional fiber artist and business owner here in Napa. She's also a concerned mother of a four-year-old who will join TK this fall. Last fall, I toured many schools within Napa Unified School District to learn about the differences and to find the best fit for our daughter. In almost every classroom I entered, kids were either in front of iPads, the Promethean board, or on Chromebooks, and Promethean boards seemed to have taken over the classroom. When I asked about screen time and the use of devices in TK and kindergarten, the answers were inconsistent. No staff member seemed to know how much time kids spend in front of screens at the schools. This seems alarming since a quick Google search reveals a vast number of studies, articles, and recommendations by institutions such as the Kaiser Family Foundation, the CDC, the American Academy of Pediatricians, and ECHO on the negative physical and mental health effects of too much screen time, amongst which are the following: increased aggression, increased anxiety, lower tolerance levels, decreased attention span, and obesity. A population-based study published in the Preventative Medicine Report states that after one hour a day of use, any additional use of screens is often associated with lower psychological well-being, including less curiosity, less self-control, more distractibility, more difficulty in making friends, less emotional stability, being more difficult to care for, and inability to finish tasks. The same source recommends keeping our kids away from digital devices and limiting screen time to a minimum for healthy development, to keep technology out of bedrooms, away from mealtimes, during playtime, and before bedtime. It's also recommended that devices are not used to distract or to keep children quiet. We are trying our hardest to follow this advice. We educate grandparents and caregivers, and in, and are inventive in finding ways to keep our kids busy, creatively engaged, and to offer lots of playtime and time outdoors. But our kids spend four to seven hours a day in school and two to four hours in aftercare. So, this needs to be a responsibility taken on by the schools as well. My concerns are, how much time accumulatively are kids spending in front of screens? Is it possible to get some transparency on that? Is there an option to opt out? And what happens with all the data collected while using these apps? Can I choose not to have any data collected and used by third parties? Our kids are precious. They are the future of our society. We owe it to them and to ourselves that we give our very best to provide them with a healthy upbringing. Thank you.
Next commenter?
Yes, next commenter is Nicole, Nicole, sorry, Galford. Go ahead, please.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, my name is Nicole Boers-Galford. I appreciate having the opportunity to speak tonight in support of reducing screen time exposure for our children. I am a proud mom of two young children who are NVUSD student, NVUSD students in TK and second grade. I'm also a proud NVUSD speech-language pathologist with 14 years of experience in the field. In the interest of my own children's education and well-being, as well as all of the education and well-being of our children, all of our children, I stand in strong support of limiting screen time, and I want to acknowledge that this is not an NVUSD-specific problem. This is at minimum a national problem. But just as NVUSD leads the charge for excellence in education in so many other ways, I believe that NVUSD has the potential to demonstrate excellence in a healthy screen time usage in schools. In my last 14 years of working with children in elementary schools over three districts, I've witnessed an increase in the amount of screen time used in schools, as well as reported by children in their homes. And it is well-known within the spe- the field of speech-language pathology that early childhood exposure to screens has a negative impact on our children's attention spans, early literacy skills, language development, social skills, and executive function skills. The impact of screens is twofold. The screens themselves have negative effects that others have already spoken to. Additionally, any time spent on a screen is time spent without face-to-face human connection and communication, and that is what our children and our world today are lacking. Our children are not lacking for screen time exposure. They will become tech-literate whether we try to or not. There's enough of that in our world. They are sorely lacking for human connection, learning how to regulate their emotions, learning how to wait, learning how to have a longer attention span. A conversation I had with a pediatrician not long ago really struck home. They talked about how in the past, when children received vaccines, parents would be seen hugging, looking, talking, soothing their children. And what pediatricians see now more than ever is the child gets the vaccine and a screen is shoved in their face to distract them from their pain. I just feel like that is a, one big example of what's happening overall with screen usage in general in our society, and I think we can do a lot to reverse these changes and to stand as an example for healthy screen time usage. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Yes, our last speaker is Norma Ortiz. Go ahead, please.
Hello, Board of Education, our community as a whole. My name is Norma Ortiz. In terms of the March 7th, 2024 closed session items, five conference, legal counsel, anticipated litigation, six initiation of litigation.
Excuse me, excuse me, you know, we can't talk about closed session items in...
No, they have the opportunity.
You, I mean, well, you had the opportunity earlier, and this is...
So, I can't talk about that as a parent?
No, no.
It's an agendized item.
It's, 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 yeah, it's, it's an agendized item, and this is for the items that are not on the agenda.
So, what does that mean?
It means we can't talk about it.
At this time.
At this time.
Ms. Ortiz, you needed to provide a public comment at the moment that, on the agenda where it was public comment on closed session items, and that has already passed. So, thank you very much for being present this evening.
Okay, I'll just provide it at the Napa register. Thank you.
Okay, so, that's it for public comments. Thanks to everyone who spoke, and we're moving on to... Oh, right.
I also just want to report that there was no public comments on non-agenda items that were submitted via email before 8:00 AM this morning.
Okay, great. So, there really are no more public comments. Okay, thank you. Okay, great. Now, we can move on to reports, each. Board of Education and Student Board Representative, tell us what you've been up to.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. I just want to start by congratulating the Students of the Month in case they watch this. It's always great to have them here, and it's just a little bit more special when they're from Napa High, especially when they, when they came from MDLA and Harvest, which I both went to, and it was really awesome to see both of them here because it really is a great program, and I'm really grateful to have been able to, to go through that. Since our last meeting on February 13th, I met with the District Advisory Council, Student Advisory Council. Here, we talked about our focus groups that we had held at each school site. And then on February 15th, I participated in learning walks at Napa High, which I really enjoyed. I, it was really interesting to see the difference between Napa High and the other schools that we've toured, and, and it was cool to kind of, you know, be at my home campus and talk to students that, that I know quite well. On February 29th, I attended the Wellness Center, or the Wellness Fair at Napa High. It was an event put on for students, and we had a dozen or so nonprofit organizations come and set up tables so that students could learn about the different work that they do in our community. There are a variety of different organizations, all focusing on different issues that are very important to be addressed for our students, from emergency disaster preparedness to a variety of, of mental health services. So, that is something that was really great, and I'm really grateful that we have that at Napa High, and hopefully that continues for years to come. And then finally, for my report, this past Sunday, I ran and volunteered for the Napa Half Marathon. There's a lot of students across all of the high schools volunteering. I saw Trustee Gracia there, and it was really great to see everyone come together for that community event. With that, I conclude my report.
Good evening, everyone. I think as we approved our agenda and our minutes, it's clearly we've been busy since our last meeting, so I'm not going to necessarily point out all of the meetings we've been together, February 3rd, 8th, 10th, 15th, 17th, and 26th. In addition to that, I did have the pleasure of touring Snow Elementary Schools. I want to thank Principal Motter for her tour and, and walking through the TK classrooms all the way to recess time, and it really is a beautiful facility, just kind of, as we've been talking about our facilities and just looking at what it could be for some of our schools. And, and yes, I, I'm kind of reacting here a little bit and listening to, to the audience of the Promethean Boards and all that, you know, I think... You know, I think, we thank everybody for their comment and, and, you know, we are listening. In addition to that, and also, along with another, a couple of more Board of Trustees, got a preview of the draft portraits and of our graduate portraits and adult portraits and so on. So really looking forward to what that final presentation is going to look like as we continue to move along. I think by continuing to listen to the public, and whether it's in a strategic plan process or a public comment, there's always opportunity for the school district to learn and find ways to be there for our students and our staff. And I think that was it until we had more items that we went through this past week, but we've already discussed those and addressed those. So that concludes my report.
I attended the final Guiding Coalition number three, and I am very excited for the work to be shared with our internal and external communities. It is a multi-year project, but it is a deep reflection of how we value our students and all aspects of their learning environment. Post our last board meeting, I attended the last February NCOE Board of Education meeting where there was a very brief overview of the MCMS financials. I attended a special board meeting where the focus was on the superintendent evaluation process and governance standards. I was then out of the country for a week. I then had the privilege of presenting our California collaborative governance work in late February to a weekly call of educational leaders with Dr. Masetti and the Superintendent of San Jose Unified and one of her trustees. I, like my peers, had a call to discuss the NVUSD Board of, Board Preview of Draft Portraits and Core Values that the Guiding Coalition generated. We had another NVUSD Special Board Meeting to further educate the community on the MCMS countywide application before the NCOE Board. Assistant Superintendent Mongualla and Stephanie Farland from Capital Advisors did an excellent job once again of exposing the myriad of deficiencies in the applicating, application, including legislative and financial. It has been a very busy few weeks of public engagement, met with some of our local community organizations to discuss, discuss youth engagement, met with local officials to discuss how education intersects with city and county priorities, and met with some faculty members to discuss their view of our strategic vision for NVUSD. I attended the coffee with the superintendent at Vintage High School. On Tuesday, I attended the NCOE meeting and listened to public comment, the NCOE's board discussion, and then the NCOE vote to approve the countywide charter. I will discuss that in my comments on, under our finance meeting. Post the NCOE meeting, I attended a celebration for one of the local elections where it was nice to hear positive chatter about NVUSD. I attended the Board Advisory Finance Meeting. I attended the City of Napa Meeting, which was hosted at the Redwood Middle School Campus. We had a robust discussion about facilities, finance, property updates, student services, and the impact of the charter approval on NVUSD and potentially the city. We concluded our meeting with a tour of the Redwood Campus and its visible facilities needs. And this morning, Dr. Masetti and I, again with San Jose Unified, had the privilege of participating in an additional California collaborative presentation. It was a wonderful opportunity to share our approach to governance, governance and to appreciate and learn from others. And I will respectfully let Dr. Masetti go into more detail. And that concludes my report.
All right. I attended on the 9th of February, the Legislative Action Meeting for CSBA. Also, on the 9th and 10th, the Guiding Coalition Meeting. Then on the 14th, the Curriculum Meeting. 15th was midterm eval. The 17th, Board Self-Eval. The 20th, F&amp;T Meeting. The 21st, I attempted to attend the MCMS Board Meeting, which was apparently noticed for the wrong date. And then on the 26th, I attended the review of draft portraits as part of the Guiding Coalition. Also, on the 26th, the Special Board Meeting where the MCMS Countywide Charter was presented. On the 29th, I attended the Phantom of the Opera put on by Vintage High School. It was opening night, and it was a very impressive performance. On the 5th, I had coffee with the superintendent at Vintage High School, and then also on the 5th, attended the NCOE meeting where they conditionally approved the MCMS countywide petition. That concludes my report.
Good evening. So I attended several of the same meetings as my fellow trustees, so I won't repeat those. But I, I attended the, in addition to those, I attended the College and Career Readiness Leadership Team Meetings on the, on February 20th and March 4th. Those are always great discussions of what we would like to see in our future graduates, kind of builds in the whole, all the work with strategic planning. So really looking forward to that coming to fruition. On February 20th, I attended the American Canyon Middle School PTO Meeting, always, you know, helpful to be in my own community and engage with the parents of the students of, or friends of my own kids. And I had the pleasure, along with trustees Rizer and Water and Hart, of attending the Northern California Percussions Alliance at American Canyon High School over last weekend. It was a wonderful display of musical talent from all of the different schools, but it's always a great pleasure to see our own school and my kid's school performing as well. So kudos to those students and especially to the parents who actually put on this great show. They're always there volunteering. So thank you for, to the American Canyon High School Music Booster Club. And that concludes my report.
Okay, Happy Women's History Month, everybody. A lot of repeats, the Guiding Coalition keynote speech. I wasn't there for the whole official meeting, but was invited to listen to that keynote speech. Twice took myself down to the Napa County Office of Education to listen to public hearings about the countywide petition. On the 14th of February, I had the Curriculum and Student Support Committee, Board Advisory Committee Meeting. We had the two, the midterm evaluation for the superintendent and the board self-evaluation on the 15th and 17th of February. Like has been mentioned, also had the preview of the draft portraits for our strategic revisioning process. Also, the attended and got to present the awards to the winners. There were 30 schools total competing in American Canyon High School gym all day Saturday. I think I was hearing drums for hours after I drove away from that event. And was surprised this year by there was a wind ban, so basically indoor marching band with tubas and horns. That was a very cool thing. This is related, but not in my role as trustee, but I want to share that on this past Monday, the 4th, I spent the day in Sacramento advocating for gun sense legislation with my volunteer group Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense. We were advocating for laws that would expand training around the Gun Violence Restraining Order, which is the mechanism by which our laws allow police and law enforcement to take temporary custody of weapons when someone is unstable or a danger to themselves or others. And on that note, I want to give a shout out to my dear friend Liz Russell, who, as we speak, or it's probably over now, but she was the invited guest of Congressman Mike Thompson at the State of the Union today. This Saturday marks the sixth anniversary of the Pathway Home Shooting in Yountville. Liz was a survivor of that shooting and turned her pain into purpose and is an amazing advocate for, for gun sense legislation in our country. And that's why Congressman Thompson chose her as his one invited guest. So I'll be thinking of her and our entire community on Saturday as we remember the lives lost in that shooting. And on a less somber note, I also attended Napa High Choir's Spring Concert last night. It's always an amazing experience, whether it's the Percussion Alliance, or a choir concert, or the Phantom of the Opera. I'll be attending Saturday's show to see kids really in their element, coming together and being passionate about something that, that is their thing. And so choir was my kid's thing, and I just want to take this moment because I have the sad honor of voting to approve the personnel document later on in the agenda that Duncan Cooper, the Director of Napa High Choir, announced last night to the public, although the students already know that for personal reasons, he's resigning his position at the end of this school year. And I just want to give him my heartfelt thanks for all that he's given to my children and to the students of Napa High and, and our community. So thank you, Duncan. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Duncan. Okay, my report is, on February 10th, I too went to the Guiding Coalition. On the 13th, I also went to the Napa County Office of Education Meeting. On the 15th, Superintendent Evaluation. On the 16th, I attended the monthly Latino Leadership Luncheon. And I went because our own Dr. Masetti was speaking, along with Doctors Nemko and Dr. Powell. And it was a lot of, very enjoyable, and I was very proud of our representation. And on the 21st, I went to a dine and donate for choir, where I ran into a million, a million parents and teachers who were, who told me I was doing a good job, which was nice because I'd been feeling beaten up that week. And on the 23rd, I visited New Tech High's health class. You know, I really enjoyed it. I was only going to one, go for one class, and I stayed for two. And on the 26th, I too went to the draft portraits, and we had a special board meeting about Maya Commis. And last Saturday, on the 2nd, I too went to the Northern California Percussion Alliance. Unlike some people, I was there all day. And the last time my eardrums had to work out like that, I was in the second row at the premiere of Tommy. And on the 4th, yeah, I'm old. On the 4th, I went to Canyon Oaks and did Read Across America to two delightful classrooms, second and third graders. And on the 5th, Vintage High School, coffee with the superintendent in the VHS library. Then in the afternoon, I went to the Napa County Office of Education. You know, they were having the meeting about the Maya Commis Charter School. I gave an eloquent, restrained, and completely ineffective speech. On the 4th, I had my weekly, you know, my before-meeting check-in with the superintendent and Finance Committee Meeting, and I will have a couple of comments about that. And then that night, I went to the Black History Month, Final Black History Month Book Club Meeting and found out that I was on the wrong night. But I did read the book, Black Jacobins, must-read book, everybody. I mean, it's, I just tore right through it. And let's see, and on the 7th, which is today, before this meeting, I had a meeting with the Students for Climate Action. And that concludes my report. And, okay, and now, here we go. Okay, now we're going to go to the Board Representative Reports, Special Education Community Advisory Committee.
We have not met.
Trustee Water, President Water. In our... In our recognition of representatives in the room, I realized that our student board alternate is here.
She is here, and I didn't see her behind...
Student Board Mitsura here. Hi, that's all.
She's utterly, you are utterly camouflaged by his head, and I was going to introduce you and didn't see you. And I thought, well, I guess she went home early. You want to hop up and say hello and introduce yourself? From American Canyon High School, a talented actress and excellent student.
Hello, everyone. It's so great to be here in person. It's definitely very different than watching you all on Zoom. I can feel the energy in the room, and it's honestly so great and very empowering. So I want to say thank you to all of you. I know that it's a lot to do this after a long day of work, so thank you, thank you for all your work and your dedication. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I'm so, you are utterly camouflaged. It's your fault for being so tall. But it's a pleasure to see you again, okay? Yes, that's okay. We're all friends, let's go. Okay, Special Education Community Advisory Committee.
We have not met.
Have not met. Okay, City of American Canyon liaison.
We have not met.
Have not met. City of Napa liaisons.
We met yesterday.
You did meet yesterday. Okay, great. Town of Yountville liaison.
We have not met.
Have not met. Okay, now Superintendent and Executive Staff.
Great, thank you, President Water. Good evening, NVUSD trustees and community. I wanted to start out this evening's report with a heartfelt congratulations to New Technology High School, Penguin Nation, and Vintage High School, Crusher Nation, for being recognized as California Distinguished Schools. The 2024 California Distinguished Schools Award recognizes California middle and high schools which have proven exceptional in implementing the academic content and performance standards adopted by the California State Board of Education for all students. On February 29th, the State Superintendent Tony Thurman announced that New Technology High School and Vintage High School were among 293 middle and high schools selected for this honor. The schools are recognized for the California Distinguished Schools Award based on exceptional student performance, based on achieving exemplary performance in English Language Arts and Math, reducing suspensions on their campuses, and demonstrating high graduation rates. That, of course, applies to high schools only. Both New Technology High School and Vintage High School have a status indicator on our California dashboard of yellow and showed a positive increase in the average student's distance from standard in both ELA and Math. Both schools were also in the blue category on the dashboard for their graduation rates. Although Vintage experienced a slight decline, the graduation rate still exceeds 95%, which places the site in that higher blue category. New Technology High School was yellow, and Vintage High School was green because they both had a decline with their suspension rate, which is obviously a favorable indicator of a more positive campus culture. So congratulations to both of our high schools. We are incredibly proud of this accomplishment and recognition. I also wanted to remind the community this evening about two upcoming events. You've heard about the trustees mentioning in their reports about their review of the draft portraits as part of the work that we've been doing around strategic visioning and planning. We're excited about our community installation, which is scheduled for Saturday, March 16th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. here at the Ed Center, 2425 Jefferson. The community installation is open to the public, and it provides one last opportunity for community members, staff, students, and families to provide feedback on the final draft of our new strategic vision. So we welcome, everyone's welcome. On Tuesday, March 19th, at 5:30 p.m., the Napa Valley Unified School District and the Napa Valley College, both Boards of Education, will be holding their first joint board meeting here at the Ed Center in our boardroom. We are the hosts. We're excited about this joint meeting, where trustees from both agencies and the public will have the opportunity, opportunity to hear from staff and learn about how we are strengthening and deepening our partnership to expand career and college pathways, dual enrollment opportunities across our system, and very excited about the new early college program at New Technology High School. So please tune in or come and attend in person here in the boardroom. I would like to make a brief statement also during my, during my report this evening about the litigation that was filed against the Napa County Office of Education last night in response to their vote to approve the Maya Commis Middle School Countywide Charter Petition at their Tuesday, March 5th board meeting. I want to reassure our community that we are litigating for very specific legitimate reasons. We take the decision to litigate very seriously and give a decision like this extensive thought and consideration. As we've repeatedly explained, this charter petition violates the Education Code regarding countywide charter petitions. Approving charter petitions that violate Education Code sets a very harmful precedent at both the local and state levels that would threaten the fiscal stability of the Napa Valley Unified School District and other districts across the state of California. It is also important to note that the charter school is projecting a target enrollment of approximately 340 students over the next three years. We want the community to understand that this additional enrollment loss, on top of our already steep enrollment decline, will translate into an additional annual revenue loss of approximately $3.5 million, again, every... loss of approximately $3.5 million, again, every year, for the foreseeable future. Our job is to protect the resources we need to educate our 16,000 students. We are unwilling to ignore the legal and financial implications of this decision and the impact that it will have on our staff and students in both the short term and the long term. In fact, I think it's important for the community to learn and understand that there is legislation being advanced by our own local state Senator Bill Dodd, SB 1380, to address this exact situation and scenario for districts who face the issue in the future. Dodd's SB 1380 is a proposed bill that would protect other districts from the exact actions that were taken by the NCOE Board of Education on Tuesday night. I encourage any community member, any community members that are interested in this topic to review Dodd's bill, which is sponsored by the California School Boards Association, the Vallejo City Unified School District, and of course, us, the Napa Valley Unified School District, who has a high degree of interest in this topic impacting California public schools. When you have to get legislation passed in order to ensure that local school districts are protected from their own county offices of education and from unmitigated charter expansion on the heels of a district making cuts and closing and consolidating schools in order to protect its fiscal stability, you know we have a problem. I want to appreciate Dr. Nemko and Mr. Schultz for their time today. Mr. Manguala, our Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, and I went to meet with them today at their offices. We had a long discussion about the complex challenges before us as educational leaders in a county that is experiencing long-term, dramatic economic and demographic shifts. With that, we're going to turn to our Assistant Superintendents so they can report out on the work that is happening in their respective areas, and we will start with Assistant Superintendent Dana Page, who oversees the Human Resources Division.
Good evening, President Water, Board of Trustees, Dr. Masetti, and Student Board Representative McGrath. So, staffing and hiring for next school year is underway. HR Director Elizabeth Gonzalez and Special Education Coordinator Micah Watanabe represented NVUSD at a job fair at Sacramento State earlier this week. It was fun for them to meet some Vintage High alumni who stopped by our booth. They are graduating this year from Sac State, doing their undergraduate, and making plans to enter a teaching credential program in the fall, so we're excited to keep in touch with them and look forward to supporting and encouraging these bright students as they follow their dream of becoming a teacher. We will be attending the Chico State Job Fair next Friday and Sonoma State later in April. On Monday at Sonoma State, Coordinator of Educator Talent and Development Kate Gogger will participate in an open house highlighting the residency grant program rerun in partnership with Sonoma State and with Santa Rosa City Schools. The residents are students in a credential program who spend a full year doing student teaching in our NVUSD classrooms, and they receive a stipend to help cover living expenses. They will be in attendance, some of our current residents will be in attendance and share their experiences in this program at the open house along with our HR staff, and hopefully help more students sign up for this great opportunity. Lastly, I hope you saw our latest staff spotlight highlighting Coordinator of Parent Engagement, Viviana Loera. Viviana has served NVUSD for almost 10 years. She is passionate about providing support to parents to help them fully access our educational system and to use their voice in improving services and programs for their children. Through her work in developing and empowering school site parent-community liaisons, she has been instrumental in serving thousands of parents over the years. Please take a moment to learn more about Viviana and what drives her to do this important work. Thank you, and this concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Next, we'll have Assistant Superintendent Mike Pearson, who oversees the Operational Services Division.
Good evening, President Water, NVSD Board of Education Trustees, Dr. Masetti, Student Board Representative Finn McGrath. Congratulations on the marathon, and members of the NVSD community. It's always a pleasure to provide each of you with an update of Operational Services. Under Food Service, we have several highlights. Director of Food Service Kristen Teakell recently hosted 25 participants in the Chef Anne Fellowship Program last week. Over the course of three days, participants from across the nation, including our very own Mohammed Yassin, learned how NVSD is a leader in the healthy school food pathway. So, congratulations Kristen for hosting the Chef Anne people. On Thursday, February 29th, this past Thursday, this was on the leap year day, just so you all know, Food Service did feed a record number of students, 7,769 student lunches in a single day, which is a new record, as I said. Menu items this day, in case you're wondering, were French toast, casserole, cheese quesadilla, chicken wings, Detroit-style pizza, and chicken Caesar wrap. For the month of January, Food Service saw an increase of 12% in the number of breakfasts when compared to January of '23, and a 20% increase in the number of lunches when compared to 2023. Why is this important? As you know, we've seen a record number of student participation in the past years due to universal meals, but more importantly, our Food Service staff has continued to improve the quality of our food to keep student participation numbers at extremely high level. The Food Service team is also gearing up for the Plastic Free Day on Friday, April 19th. We've already ordered reusable bags, and these will also be implemented in '24, '25 school year. Speaking about that, the bulk milk dispenser rollout, I know this is super exciting, but this is, this is great because it's happening, it's happening right now to reduce waste. By the end of next week, we'll have 10 schools that will no longer be using milk cartons. And then finally, on Friday, March 15th, I know that Trustee Gracia is going to be really excited about this, but for St. Patrick's Day, all school sites will have an all-green salad and an all-green fruit bar, so thank you. Under Transportation, last week, the Transportation Department sent five employees to participate in the sectional Rodeo, and Rodeo, held in Clovis. The Rodeo is sponsored by the California Association of School Transportation Officials and the Clovis Unified School District. I'm pleased to report that the team of Justin Binion, Kadim Fortune, Andres Oropesa, Myron Guzman, and Jason Gallo took first place as a team in transit buses, first-place individual for transit buses, and achieved the highest score, overall team score, out of nine school districts and 104 participants. Congratulations, and in two weeks, they travel to San Bernardino for the next Rodeo. So, there you go. So, congratulations to everybody on that. With our Arbingir training, two of our staff, two of my directors have actually taken the initiative to do a meet-to-learn, and I want to recognize Director of Food Service Kristen Teakell and Director of Operations Gloria Aguirre for taking time to use this strategy. Kristen actually met with a Stonebridge parent who's interested in improving the quality of food at Stonebridge, and she reported that the meeting went really well, and she also found out that the parent is locally employed in the restaurant industry, so she made a connection, so that was really good for that. And Gloria met with a teacher at Donaldson Way Elementary School to learn more about the teacher's concern as it relates to school cleanliness, so I thought that was a, I just wanted to give them both a shout-out for taking the initiative for that. With Career Days, there is a Career Day next week on March 13th. The Maintenance Department will be participating at Phillips Elementary School's Career Day, and then the following day, March 14th, the Maintenance Department and the Transportation Department will also be participating in the Bright Futures 8th Grade Career Day held at the Napa Esco Expo for middle school students. And then lastly, under Professional Development tomorrow, we have the following happening in Maintenance and Operations. There'll be 20 MNO employees to participate in a four-hour CPR, first aid, and AED training. They will all be certified at the end of the training, and we will be training the Maintenance Lead Workers, Secondary Head Custodians, and a couple of other key custodians, along with the Director of Maintenance and Grounds, Albert DeSousa. Something we've been trying to get done for an awful long time, and I have to thank everybody for just continuing to push on me and to Marie McMurray for finally getting the people lined up that we needed to get lined up for this. The goal will be eventually to be, to train as many MNO staff as possible since these members all know and are key individuals on campuses, and they know where the AED vices are located. Food Service is going to have approximately 25 individuals who will be taking the Food Service Handler Exam, which will be proctored in the central kitchen. Employees have been studying very hard for this rigorous exam, and the participants can elect to take it in English or Spanish. And then Transportation will be sending 15 employees, they'll be driving a school bus down to Modesto City Unified, who's an industry leader in electric buses, combination mechanics, drivers, and management, will be meeting with staff from Modesto City Unified to test-drive electric buses and learn more about the maintenance of electric buses and what goes along with that. And that concludes my report tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Pearson. Next, we have Assistant Superintendent Pat Andrew Jennings, who oversees the Instructional Services Division.
Good evening, President Water, Board Trustees, Dr. Masetti, Student Board Representative McGrath, and the NVUSD community. Tonight, up for board approval is the selection of Joanna Novaro in the new grant-funded position of Coordinator of Safety and Emergency Services. As the safety of our students and staff is paramount, we are grateful to have her join our team. Ms. Novaro will work with school sites to ensure we are employing best practices in school safety and emergency preparedness. Ms. Novaro, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you. Hey. Hi, good evening. I just wanted to introduce myself to all of you tonight, and Dr. Masetti, thank you so much for having me onboard. I feel very welcomed and very excited to join Napa Valley Unified School District. Thank you for the opportunity.
Welcome.
The Instructional Division is geared up and ready for our District-wide Professional Development Day tomorrow at American Canyon High School. We have over 1,000 participants that have registered for tomorrow. We've been actively engaged in planning and preparing for this day for several months. I want to express a tremendous amount of gratitude to our admin team, directors, coordinators, academic specialists, and our support staff who have worked to create an engaging and well-designed professional learning day. Our theme this year is the power of collective impact, and we really want our teachers and all of our participants to understand the impact they have based on what they do every day. I also want to thank the custodial staff at American Canyon High School who helped us unload two pallets of materials for tomorrow's professional learning day. Their assistance and support was critical. I also want to thank Director Sarah Knox, who has served as the key organizer of this massive undertaking. Academically, NVUSD continues to have a laser focus on building the system structures to align our career readiness programs, a key, which is a key success, criteria for Annual Board Priority Number Four. On February 20th, in partnership with ConnectEd, we launched the NVUSD College and Career Readiness Leadership Team, which is composed of representatives from the Board of Trustees, Executive Cabinet, District Staff, Site Leaders, our Napa Valley Education Association leadership, secondary teachers, and parents. The purpose of this team is to identify existing strengths and challenges to build college and career readiness pathways, assess our readiness as a district, our interests and our capacity, and the interest and capacity of key stakeholders, develop a shared understanding of college and career readiness, coordinate efforts with Prospect Studios as the strategic plan is developed, and lastly, define and develop college and career readiness pathways in NVUSD. During the first meeting, team members learned about the purpose and role of the NVUSD College and Career Readiness Leadership Team. Staff shared their, what they learned about integrated pathways based on the school site visits in January. ConnectEd provided an overview of the core elements of college and career pathways. During the March meeting, the team developed a deeper understanding of the elements of a high-quality pathway and the ConnectEd district framework that supports college and career readiness pathways. I appreciate the leadership of Dr. Monica Ready as she spearheads this work. And then, to address Annual Board Priority Number One, focus on improving math supports and progress, we continue the implementation of the new secondary Math Curriculum Carnegie Learning. We are monitoring the quality and consistency of our implementation. Currently, Integrated Math I, II, and III teachers are deeply engaged in learning how to best implement this new math curriculum. Following the second common assessment that they gave to all Math I, II, and III students, the team used proficiency scales to assess students' knowledge and skills. Following this analysis, teachers engaged in lesson and unit planning focused on incorporating inquiry into their learning activities. These math teachers are experiencing their third and final round of support with the Carnegie Learning Coaches, with each math teacher having three touchpoints with our, the Carnegie Learning Coaches over the next few months. Lastly, following up on Dr. Masetti's acknowledgement, I'd like to also congratulate New Technology High School and Vintage High School for their designation as a California Distinguished School. Congratulations to Penguin and Crusher Nations. Thank you, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Andrew Jennings. And last, not least, we have Assistant Superintendent Rob Manguala, who oversees Business Services.
I will go my report tonight, I have a long presentation in a little bit.
Great, thank you, Mr. Manguala. President Water, that concludes our staff reports.
Okay, should we take a break? Okay, five-minute break? Great. Five-minute break, thank you. Okay, we're set, great. Approval of Consent Agenda, that's I, General Services, background, background information on these items is provided to the Board prior to the meeting. A common motion takes action without discussion on roll call vote unless discussion of items is requested by Board members.
Move to approve.
Okay, a motion from Trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second from...
I'll second.
Trustee, Trustee Jankowicz. And, Mr. Michael, do we have any public comments on this item?
We do not have a public comment on consent items.
Okay, thank you. And, so we've got a motion and a second, okay, Student trustee?
Aye.
President Water, I believe we need to do a roll call vote on this one.
Oh, we do?
For the Consent Agenda.
Oh, the consent, we do, okay, sorry. I forgot to put a star next to it. Okay, all right, roll call vote.
Student Board Member McGrath?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Steve?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mare?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you, okay. Jay, Presentations and Discussion Items. Okay, number one, General Services, report by California Collaborative on District Reform, Keeping the Main Thing, the main thing, lessons about effective school board governance from Napa Valley Unified School District and San Jose Unified School District. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the School Board, Superintendent Masetti, Napa Valley Unified Staff, members of the Napa Valley Unified Community. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight and to stand here at the podium where I am no longer blocking the line of sight.
Yeah, I know.
Between a lot of people behind me.
And she's gone anyway, so...
My name is Joel Knutson, and I'm here with my colleague Marina Castro. We are researchers from the American Institutes for Research, and I chair a group called the California Collaborative on District Reform. Last month, the California Collaborative released a new report describing the governance practices employed by the governing teams in both Napa Valley Unified and San Jose Unified School Districts that enabled them to advance district priorities and stay focused on improving teaching and student learning. Tonight, we're really excited for the opportunity to be able to share some of the key findings and main ideas that emerged from those conversations and that are presented in the report. We see it as an opportunity to continue the dialogue that we began in our conversations with all of you, and to gather your feedback about the lessons that make the most sense to share with broader audiences as we seek to learn and share what we've learned from you with other governing teams and broader members of the K2O education community. So, with that, let me turn it to Marina to get us started.
So, this meeting seems professional and pretty ordinary, so far anyway, I guess there's always room for something. But we don't have to look very far for examples of board meetings going awry, especially in the last few years. It seems that there are more and more examples of news reports of school board meetings becoming increasingly hostile, and the polarized nature of our national political environment has made its way into the work of school governance. School board recalls in both traditionally progressive and conservative districts reveal an electorate that is frustrated with an approach to governance that can distract from and even undermine the key issues of teaching and student learning. Moreover, there isn't a lot of understanding about what school boards do and how they actually work, from the public, from people who run for school boards, even the research community. For as much academic literature there is about almost every other aspect of education, there's very little written about school governance. And how are we supposed to know what they do when all we have are these kinds of examples? Fortunately, there are models of effective governance we can learn from, and NVUSD is one of them. Like we mentioned earlier, our report, Keeping the Main Thing, the main thing, Lessons About Effective School Board Governance from Napa Valley and San Jose Unified School Districts, was published last month. To write this report, Joel and I conducted interviews and reviewed documents from both governance teams. We read some of the existing research on school boards, and we talked to other experts on school governance in California. And as researchers, like Joel mentioned, we think it's important to share what we learned, report back to the teams that generously shared their time with us, and to be transparent about our process and what we learned. So, I'll jump into a little bit about... So I'll jump into a little bit about what we learned. So like I alluded to earlier, there are sometimes misunderstandings about what school boards do and don't do. So I want to begin with highlighting four key features of school boards that are important for framing what I'll be describing today. As governance consultant Luann Rivera from California School Boards Association, or CSBA, said to us, "There's nothing quite like being on a school board." The first key feature is, similar to other elected bodies, a school board's member's power to create policy exists only as a collective. Any decision requires a majority vote to pass, and a quorum is required before trustees can address any district business. Because of these dynamics, any individual trustee is powerless to make official policy without the support of at least a portion of their colleagues. Superintendent Nancy Alvaron from San Jose Unified School District shared with us that the public's perception is that an individual person, an individual board member, has the ability, the authority, to drive an agenda at the district level. It isn't clear to the public that a trustee needs two other votes on a five-person board to be able to do anything. The second feature worth highlighting is, boards only hire and supervise a single employee, the superintendent. There's no other position within the district for which the board assumes a supervisory role. Before her current role, Superintendent Musetti explained to us, "I had one boss for five years." Then you shift to this role, and you're like, "I have five to seven bosses. I have to treat them as individuals, but they only operate as a collective." Then every two years, the composition of those five to seven people can change. The dynamics for board members and superintendents, which together make up a governance team, are therefore distinct from any other person in the district. A third feature is, like other elected officials, school boards are responsible for developing and adopting district policy, not for implementing that policy. That distinction can be tricky to navigate in practice, and it can become a source of tension in many districts. When asked about this distinction, trustee Reiser, who herself was previously a teacher, shared with us that teachers who become trustees almost have a harder time because the lens that you need to use to look at issues is so very different. And as a longtime educator, it took a lot of consciousness to stay with my trustee lens and to not dive in the weeds with my teacher lens. And finally, some of these misunderstandings exist because campaigning for a school board does not teach or show you these things. Campaigning is done as an individual, where promises about how you and only you are going to transform everything can get you pretty far. But that transition from campaigning to governing can be a rude awakening for some. Our colleague on the collaborative, Rick Miller, shared from his experience, "You feel like you always have to say yes as a candidate, and then, once you join the board, you always have to say no practically overnight." Given the incentive structure of running and winning a campaign, it's no surprise that these misunderstandings exist, which is all the more reason why onboarding and orientation for newly-elected board members is crucial. Given the unique and generally misunderstood role of the school board, newly-elected trustees can potentially walk into their new positions with a poor sense of what they will be expected to do. CSBA holds an annual conference that offers many board members their first orientation about what it means to be a board member. These two districts go above and beyond those basic trainings. Both boards organize their own onboarding in-house, so to speak, where the superintendent sits side by side with each new board member for every training. Both boards participate in a two-day Good Beginnings workshop that CSBA offers, where Day One focuses on giving trustees the opportunity to form relationships with and develop respect for one another, and then Day Two asks trustees to co-develop norms and protocols for how they'll work together. And several trustees we talked to finished a five-part series called Masters in Governance, also led by CSBA. These are the proactive ways that these trustees have clear expectations for what their work entails and how they will engage in that work. But it's not just the new person or people that have to adjust to their new roles. The board, as a whole, has to readjust each time there's a new composition of members. Trustee Gonzalez-Madis said it best when she shared, "When there's a new board coming in, you're a whole new governance team." No, I didn't get that quote. Let me do it again. "When there's new board members coming in, you're a whole new governance team." So why does this matter? Well, we heard board members describe the ways in which a strong onboarding experience helps trustees develop a sense of trust and accountability towards each other. We heard examples of onboarding helping trustees better understand their colleagues' backgrounds and motivations, giving a clear sense of what their role is and is not, and helping them hold their colleagues accountable to those boundaries. Now I'm going to turn it back to Joel to talk a little bit more about the work boards do after onboarding.
Another essential piece to governance is a commitment to shared priorities. And before I describe the commitment to shared priorities, I want to talk about some of the things that get in the way. First and foremost, the work of a school district centers around preparing students for success, both during their K-12 education experience and setting on a pathway to success after they leave high school. Of course, that's complicated by the social-emotional learning leads that have always been in place and I think have come into sharper focus during the COVID pandemic. Related to that, we also see stagnant student achievement and gaps between historically underserved students and their more advantaged peers that have stayed the same or even widened in many places after the pandemic. Meanwhile, an educator shortage across the state and across the country makes it harder than ever to put highly-qualified adults in learning experiences with students that will enable them to get the kind of learning opportunities and supports that they need to thrive. Meanwhile, new funding programs from the state offer new resources to districts, but also present new programming and reporting requirements that are added to district leaders above and beyond the things they already had to do before, including programs like community schools, universal preschool, or even extended learning opportunities, among others. On top of that, there are the financial challenges that come into play. One-time COVID relief funding is coming to an end, and many districts are facing the challenge of dealing with that fiscal cliff. At the same time, districts are also grappling with declining enrollment and looking at a financial landscape that is not as supportive as it has been in recent years. And then on top of that, we hear from school boards, from community members, who raise their own priorities and their concerns. Collectively, it can be overwhelming for anybody to handle, particularly those who are sitting on this dais and those who work in central office teams. And the response is too often either to silo approaches and fragment them so that each person takes responsibility for one thing, or to try and take on everything, and in the process of trying to do everything, to do nothing well at all. In contrast, what we see in Napa Valley Unified and San Jose Unified is that a commitment to key district priorities helps to create focus for the work of the governing team. We heard about some of the strategies for sharpening those priorities. Here in Napa Valley Unified, leaders talked about the strategic plan as critical for establishing the priorities that guide the district's work. And even more specifically than that, the specific priorities that the board identifies each year to give some direction to what's happening within that broader frame of the strategic plan. And trustee Gracia explained this to us. "As you go through a school year, 100 things could come before you. You must determine, is this one of those six things that we're supposed to be focused on? If not, maybe it takes second fiddle." As this observation illustrates, the district priorities don't just exist for priorities' sake. It's what the priorities enable the two districts to do that matters. The kind of focus described in San Jose Unified and Napa Valley Unified enables the districts to identify the issues that are most important for meeting their goals and to avoid chasing every concern that emerges in a complex community environment. In addition to priorities, both school boards have a commitment to shared norms of behavior and working together. We know that in NVUSD, these norms are formally articulated in your governance handbook. But beyond that, we heard some common themes across the two school districts. We heard Marina describe ways in which the onboarding process helps to foster a sense of role clarity. By embracing and committing to their responsibilities, but not stepping beyond them, members of the governing team avoid the mixed messages, confusion, and tension that can otherwise derail improvement efforts when that kind of clarity doesn't exist. Members of the governing teams also describe the importance of seeing one another as human beings and treating one another with respect in a way that not only embraces a productive working relationship, but models that kind of relationship to the community, both within the district and for people in parents and other community roles. Districts have also embraced a practice of information sharing that members of the governing team in San Jose Unified described as a philosophy of no surprises. Superintendent Alvaron elaborated, "The more you tell them, the less you'll have to tell them later on when information and concerns arise through other channels." This isn't the way that all districts operate. Some superintendents are advised to be more judicious with the information they share, both to help reinforce role clarity and to avoid the temptation for board members to step beyond a policy role and to get into the weeds of operational issues. The approach in these districts fosters efficiency, but perhaps more importantly, equips board members with the information they need to responsibly cast consequential votes on behalf of the district's students. Superintendent Musetti described the approach in this way. "We come from a perspective that if the board is going to do hard things, like close schools, they need to understand why." Finally, governing team members described a willingness to hold one another accountable for their norms and to directly address one another in cases when people stray from their commitments to one another. Although conversations about governance often emphasize the elected trustees who make up the school board, our interviews in San Jose Unified and Napa Valley Unified underscore the understanding that a governance team is made up of both the board and the superintendent. Marina described earlier that the superintendent is the only employee that the board supervises, but their professional relationship, when it's working well, anyway, is symbiotic. The superintendent has expertise on teaching and learning and has a direct pulse on the work being done in the district. The board represents the community at large and is tasked with holding the superintendent accountable for approving the system. Our interview participants described a few aspects of that relationship that enable it to work well. The commitment to extensive communication is a reflection of each superintendent's approach to board relationships. Those individual relationships are also a priority for the superintendent in both districts, from the early onboarding efforts to ongoing communication individually in a group settings throughout each trustee's tenure on the school board. Superintendent Musetti described it in this way. "By describing the priority of getting them to know, them being the board members, getting to know them as individual people, seeing them as people, knowing what their needs and educational interests are and drivers for being on the board." She continued to say that's what drives her engagement strategy with each individual board member. Reality is that in any large community, some difference of opinion is inevitable, and disagreements will often make their way into the work of the school board. The report shares two examples of this kind of tension. In San Jose Unified, there was a rigid controversy where there was this pretty intense difference of opinion about the ongoing role of school resource officers from the San Jose Police Department on school campuses in the district. Here in Napa Valley Unified, we heard about the painful decision to close under-enrolled schools and the way that permeated the work of the school board and its ongoing impacts on members of the school community. In both examples, board members of the governing teams described ways in which they leaned into their values to navigate these difficult times. Extensive communication and information sharing positioned trustees to make well-informed votes. Leaning on relationships enabled members of the governing team to continue interacting respectfully even through differences of opinion and to try and understand the motivations and values behind individuals' votes. And in the end, trustees were willing to make decisions based on what they believed to be the best interest of the broader district community, even when some community members disagreed with their votes, sometimes very intensely. Collectively, these behaviors helped to ensure that any policy disagreement didn't disrupt trustee relationships with one another or derail an overall commitment to working together on the myriad other issues under their purview.
We opened this presentation with examples of board meetings characterized by disruption and dysfunction. This governing team offers a refreshing example of a more productive and collaborative approach to governance. In the face of increasing political polarization we've seen across the country that is finding its way into the work of school boards, we asked our interview participants whether they felt their board's cultures were strong enough to withstand that pressure. And we had some interview respondents describe the ways their norms could help them withstand those more disruptive forces. But even still, we know that the Napa Valley Unified community, like others, is also vulnerable. It's part of what made us interested in this work in the first place. Some key questions emerge in relation to this broader political context. Do members of the district community understand the work of school boards and what it entails? Do they understand what a commitment to problem-solving enables the district to do? And, as we approach another election cycle, will the voters for Napa Valley Unified Board members prioritize those kinds of behaviors and commitments in their voting decisions?
We want to close by identifying a set of lessons that we believe emerge from the work we've done and the conversations we've had with folks in Napa Valley Unified and San Jose Unified. And really, we're eager to hear your feedback because as we take this work and try to share it with broader audiences, we want to make sure that the lessons that come out of these districts are those that are most relevant and most helpful to people in other contexts. The first of these is the importance of having a set of shared priorities that can serve as an anchor for the way that a governing team organizes its work. These can guide responses to requests, questions, and concerns. They can determine how a district invests its time, people, and money, and just as importantly, when and where it says no. We also heard that superintendents and trustees should prioritize building relationships with one another. Each member of this team is a human being, and by getting to know one another as people, including your motivations, priorities, and strengths, board members and superintendents can better understand and respond to the issues that each person identifies as important and their rationale for favoring a particular course of action. We also draw attention to the value of shared norms that guide the work of a governing team. Mutual understanding and commitment to the same expectations for interaction, behavior, and decision-making can enable a board to work effectively together at all times and especially during times of controversy. Fourth, although each individual superintendent will vary in the level of detail they provide to their trustees, board members ought to be sufficiently informed to make important decisions about their community schools and explain them to constituents. Echoing the messages earlier about onboarding, it's important that onboarding and orientation to new roles is critical for newly-elected board members, but not just for them. It can be equally important for veteran trustees to be able to orient their approach and adapt to a new composition of our governing team. Sixth, we heard how critical it is for trustees and superintendents to thoughtfully and proactively engage with community members. This includes efforts to solicit input, to guide important conversations, and to communicate the rationale behind those decisions. Engagement is also important to illustrate the value of a high-functioning governing team. I think the reality is the pool of people who understand what school boards do is incredibly small. So fostering public understanding might be critical for voters themselves to make responsible decisions when it comes to their turn to select trustees. Finally, and above all, governance takes constant work. There's a story you might have heard about the Golden Gate Bridge, which is because of the intense weather that beats down on the metal of the bridge, it needs to be painted on an ongoing basis. So painters will start at one end of the bridge, work their way all the way to the end. And by the time they finish, it's time to paint at the first end of the bridge all over again. This painting story is often used as a metaphor for building teacher capacity in school systems in recognition that great teachers aren't born. Great teachers come into the classroom and have an opportunity to reflect so they can build on their strengths and identify areas for ongoing growth and reflection and improvement. It turns out, the story isn't exactly true. Ongoing painting does happen on the bridge. It doesn't go end to end. But we still think that the metaphor applies very well to the work of school boards. Great school boards don't happen because you get lucky in an election. They don't happen just because you had a good onboarding session. They happen because members of the governing team continue to prioritize their work together and to reflect and improve so that they can continue working together in the best interest of a district. I want to close with a reflection from one of the trustees in San Jose Unified, Jose Magaña, who referred to the growing group of board candidates who are intent on creating chaos in the system so they can say, "Look, the system doesn't work." In a statement that is consistent with reflections we heard across our interviews, Magaña explained, "I want folks like me and my colleagues to be like, 'Actually, it does. It is possible when things are done the right way, with intentionality, with planning, with love.'" So we encourage you, there are copies in the room if people want to read the report. It's also available on the collaborative website at cacollaborative.org. I just want to close by thanking the members I just want to close by thanking the members of this governing team one more time for being so generous and sharing your time to help us understand your work and for giving us an opportunity to share back with you during this meeting. And we're more than happy to take any questions or hear any reflections that you might have.
Thank you, and I think we have some people online who want to.
No, just ask.
Okay, are there any public comments?
There are no public comments online.
Okay. Well.
Sure, so I'll take a second to say, I appreciate all the work that you guys put into this report. It was really gratifying to see the results of the long study that was conducted and, you know, the time that we donated was well-spent, it seems. I appreciated the six lessons that were learned that you presented, but I think that last slide talks about the bridge and how it's just a constant commitment to hard work and making it all happen is also a key piece. So it almost feels like there's seven points, but yeah, I did like the six things that you identified, but I did also think that last one was really key.
I know you've heard enough from me, but I do want to thank you for elevating governance, for creating a space for discussion to happen about what boards do and the why. Because I don't know that, at least in my tenure, that anybody has stood at the podium and talked about what we do and why, and I think it's impactful. So I appreciate the attention and care that you gave to the topic and the opportunity. I also think it's a great tool for districts to use because it gives them, I mean, I think other districts would benefit from hearing this presentation. I mean, I think we're very fortunate, we have a superintendent that, as I said today, gets in the trenches with us on governance. I don't know that that is the case everywhere. So I think what you have done is elevated this topic to a level that I hope other districts have an opportunity to participate in.
I'll echo my fellow trustees in thanking you for your interest in the time and the synthesis that you did of all that you, the data that you gathered. And I guess I just wanted to add just how important it is at this time because of the way that extremist political agendas have targeted school boards as an easy in to enact pretty extremist agendas. And so I think the way to counteract that so that school governance, you know, school boards are about doing the business of running schools and providing educational services to your students. They're not meant to be battlegrounds for culture wars. And so I think your work here, your academic research, and hopefully the way that these lessons will be disseminated more broadly is the way to counteract that hijacking of the role of trustee to really keep it squarely grounded in our real purpose. So thank you for contributing to that because I think the students of the United States deserve school boards that are able to focus on the work of educating them. So thank you for helping with that.
Yes.
I'll just be brief here. I echo the comments in terms of how it elevates the role. I mean, I was introduced to this position by saying, it's only a couple hours a week. And, you know.
Yeah, was that called for you?
Did you see our minutes? And then all the extra, it's just, I think it.
I did not conduct that introduction.
You did not conduct that. Trustee Jankoix and I will remember, and we never had that full orientation or any orientation. And so I think it's so important to have the work of the governance team here documented. And so that's what I appreciate, that it's documented, that may it show up as best practices in a governance team when they Google, because you hear a lot of people, as soon as I Google, this shows up, may this show up, right? I know a couple of boards that, specifically one that I might forward this to. And because what we do is very, it's hard and it's complex. And the most important thing is that how we present ourselves here impacts the district as an individual and as a collective group, impacts the people that I see in this room, impacts all the people in our district, and that is a level of responsibility that cannot be overlooked and continues to be either utilized, not overstated or informed enough of how important that role is. So to me, it just continues to validate how this is serious. It's not just a position that you take on for the sake of your own personal agenda, but it's much more serious than what people think it is. So I like to see it documented. It's good to see that in a piece of paper, that it's online, and that it can be accessible for those who really want to dive into the best practices that they can find when governing a board. And I find it even more with the recent issues in our own community here, how much I value also my colleagues to my left and the importance of student voices like our student board rep in being able to conduct our work as effectively as possibly we can. So thank you.
Thank you. Speaking of student voices, how about trustee McGrath sharing his feelings?
Yeah, no, I love the presentation. It was great, it was very thorough. One thing that, you know, came to my mind as I was watching this is that anytime, whether that be in the reports or in public comment or in presentations, anytime someone says something that recognizes the board for their hard work, everyone like, I just have, everyone has like this feeling where everyone's like very happy to be recognized. So I mean, I know for you guys, this isn't a job that gets a lot of recognition. I didn't know we had a school board until last spring. So just, I mean, to have this and to be this thorough and to go into the hard work that all of them do, because it is great work and all of you guys work well together from what I can see behind closed doors, I don't know what goes on. But yeah, this is, it was a very thorough presentation and it was really awesome to listen to and hear about.
Trustee, too.
Yeah, so I wished I had this report before I ran for the school board. I think this should be an automatic, but I did have the benefit of learning from my fellow, a couple of my fellow trustees, because I did reach out to them before I was running, before I pulled papers. And it was really informative because they really gave me the lowdown. It is not two hours a month, for sure. They basically told me, whatever you thought it was, you know, multiply it several times. But I will say that this is super informative. If I had this, plus my interactions with fellow trustees, sitting trustees at the time, the current trustees, I think it really gives a more complete picture rather than, well, I think I don't like something, maybe I'm a one-issue person, and saying, I want to go and change this. It really isn't how it works. It really is a collaborative, and it's actually better as a collaborative because then you get to understand all sides altogether. And so I think it's very important that we get this to everybody who wants to run. It isn't just for people who are on the board right now. And I do have one more suggestion, is that maybe as an extension of this, have a dive of, an evaluation of what a student board member brings to the table. Because I think we are so much more effective when we have a student sitting at the dais with us. It keeps us grounded, it keeps us to our mission and everything you're talking about here and why we need to make it work. And so I would highly suggest that we bring in some student voice into this as well. But thank you very much for this report.
I love that suggestion, by the way. I should just acknowledge, that's a blind spot in what we've done. So it's an opportunity, and it's a blind spot frankly, in most of the literature on school boards. So finding ways to understand and elevate that student voice, I think is a great suggestion.
Well, thank you. This is, I love listening to everybody's comments, I agree with all of you. And trustee McGrath, when you said, you didn't even know we had a school board, one of the qualities we like to pride ourselves on is being transparent. And, you know, sometimes, maybe we're so transparent, we're invisible, because it's just, it's, we are, it's really funny. We do have, I think we run the biggest restaurant in the county, in the Napa Valley, right? And don't we have the most employees? We have a lot of employees. Second largest employer and, you know, that sort of thing. And yet, there are people who think that being on the school board is, you know, not that big a deal. And if you look at our stipend, this is true. But you sat here and listened to, you know, what all of us do, you know, between meetings, you know, running around and going places and seeing people and observing students, and we're on the run, we're very, very busy. So I appreciate having this. I enjoy, I enjoy this board because I am a people person and everyone here is complete, we're all so different from each other. And I think that our board training has helped us get along quite well. And it's really useful, and I have to say, the CSBA has been terrific. So I really, I appreciate all the support I've had in becoming, you know, a halfway decent board member. And this is extremely useful. I'm going to use it to frighten people when they tell me they want to run for office. So thank you so much.
Listen, what I just want to add, I just want to conclude with a big thank you to Joel and Marina. Thank you so much for your research. I think you started out by saying that this is an under-researched topic in the field of educational research, and we find it to be incredibly valuable. As you've heard, that you've made this contribution, I would imagine that even our district team to kind of hear about what, you said the word invisible, you know, effective governance is an invisible force. You don't really recognize that you have it until you don't. And then when you don't, you see how work, the improvement work that we need to be focused on as school districts comes to a halt and stops and impacts all the layers throughout the school system from the central office district leadership team to our site administrators, principals and assistant principals, teachers and support staff, which ultimately can really negatively impact the experience that our students are having and our parents who support our students may be having as well. So governance is really hard work. I'm appreciative. School governance, I have so many instances where individuals have said, well, I'm, you know, I'm interested in running for the school board. I've sat on several nonprofit boards, or I've, you know, sat on an advisory board and have an instant, they imagine, I guess is what I want to say, that it is equivalent to that. And although there's tremendous learning in those types of governance roles, they're really, really different when it comes to the education code and compliance and all the state-driven work that we need to do and the navigation between the state and the local issues, and then ultimately the responsibility for a district's school budget and understanding how the complexity of school finance and all that, how that works so that you can leverage your resources to really improve education for students is really, really hard. And I'm really grateful that this team has been willing to invest the amount of time that they have, and I'm really proud that that has been illuminated in this report as best practices. And I do on the record need to say thank you to the California School Boards Association. They've been an incredible partner. It takes the willingness of a California school board to invest time in order to leverage what CSBA has to offer. That's not true everywhere, and this team of individuals has invested a high degree of time to ensure that they have an active governance framework that guides the decision-making, the difficult decision-making that school board trustees need to make. So thank you so much for contributing for school board members, but also for superintendent, aspiring superintendents, who also need to understand the complexity of what it means to be a superintendent and that, you know, there's one part of the job that a lot of people see, but the element of having to navigate the complexity of, you know, leading and supporting a governance team alongside individual community members who are representing constituencies, the degree of complexity in that, I think it's really important that we make it very tangible and visible as we seek to prepare people for the superintendency role, which is really needed. There's a shortage nationally right now, and so we need to make sure that we're looking at it with a lot of intentionality and visibility and unveiling the complexity of governance as we prepare leaders for the role is absolutely critical, and you've made an outstanding contribution to that effort. So thank you so much, all right? I know it's late, thanks for hanging in with us till almost 10 o'clock.
Okay, next, we've got J2, Business Services, Second Interim 2023-24 Presentation. You all can go.
It's very interesting, so you might really like it. Yeah, oh, it's not quite as fun, yeah. All right, thank you so much for the opportunity to present on our second interim. All right, next slide, please. So we've had some abnormal guidance, so typically, school districts receive very strong guidance at the January Governor's Budget Workshop. It usually provides a very clear picture and gives us the information that we need to build a budget. And so however, the governor and the Legislative Analyst Office, they have very differing opinions about what the revenue outlook will look like and how ultimately it will need to be fixed. And so things will need to be fixed by the time a budget is adopted. There is a lot of uncertainty going on. Next slide. So the governor's revenue outlook is much higher than a Legislative Analyst Office. The Legislative Analyst Office is definitely much closer to reality, and so we can see that in some of our recent data points. We'll continue to watch for more data points, but the most recent one showed that in February, the revenue shortfall actually increased. So it went from $58 billion to $73 billion, so it is going in the wrong direction. Next slide. So again, the question might become who to believe, and so again, the governor made some pretty strong statements about how he thought his data was much more accurate and it was more, we should lean into his data a little bit more, but it's just not what we're seeing in terms of the data. And so, you know, we appreciate the fact that the governor has a rosy outlook, but, you know, again, overstating revenues, it's dangerous because what ends up happening is ultimately they will have to balance or pass a balanced budget. And, you know, sudden and unthoughtful cuts to programs, it's just not in anybody's best interest. Next slide. So we are very appreciative of the fact that the governor is focusing on trying to protect education, so that is very, very important. And so not all governors have done that, we're very appreciative of that. And he does intend to protect education, but intentions can't always, you know, become reality. The revenue shortfall, it's just so large that cuts to the education budget will just have to occur. Next slide. And so if revenues come in short, like the LAO projects, and I'm just going to say, they will come in short, like the LAO projects, we need to prepare for a couple things. So the education budget is 40% of California's overall budget. The only way to balance California's budget with this kind of very large significant shortfall is to make cuts to education. So these cuts can appear in different ways. I'm going to say a term out loud, I'm not allowed to have it in writing, so it's called accounting magic. It's what, it's really, it's not what should be happening, school districts don't do it, but the state does do things like that. They'll do things like take the last payment of the year and defer it by one day. And so when you defer it by one day, it's counted into the next fiscal year. School districts can't do that, but the California, at the state level, they do do things like that. And so what are some of the things that we see in our budget would be deferrals. So again, I would, they're not saying they're deferrals, they didn't in January, but given the size of the shortfall, we are likely to see a deferral. So what's a deferral again? It just means that money that we're promised, we're not, we won't see until the next fiscal year. A spend down a reserve. A spend down of reserves, so there there will be need to be a spend down of both the state and Prop 98 reserves. Pretty significant, I would say, again, much more significant than the governor projected. In order to do that, he will need to declare a budget emergency. So expect a budget emergency being declared sometime between now and budget adoption. So that that definitely has to occur. A potential suspension of Prop 98. So the term that we like to use is a friendly suspension of Prop 98. Prop 98 is what guarantees us the 40% approximately that we receive. A friendly suspension of it, you know, forces them to follow the law, but then also have the ability to make cuts. But then those cuts are eventually made up. So you might, you might recall when LCFF was was first adopted, we were in a situation like that where we were promised money, we didn't receive it. Took a couple of years to get caught up during, you know, again, after the bad budget years, there was a catch up in the better budget years. So again, we'll just have to watch that. There's some other programs that could potentially be be cut. Funding could be cut for the after school program, ELOP, and and funding could be cut for food services. So we're, again, we're watching it very closely. We'll have to wait until we get to the May revise. Next slide. And so this this slide, I actually had a question mark next to it, a return of layoffs. But really, just what what we're really seeing across the state and and what will happen in Napa will will be a return of layoffs. And so COVID related one type funds have inflated the coffers of school districts and have hidden structural deficits. Districts have spent these funds in a variety of manners with a focus on mitigating learning loss. A reduction of positions will just absolutely have to occur. We're not currently at the level for a for a layoff in the current year for next year, but we'll definitely need to consider not filling vacant positions. This last bullet isn't quite as accurate. So again, this will be dependent on actual state revenues. Now that the county office has approved the Maya Commiss Charter, we will have to follow up on these things. So it is too late for layoffs in the current year for next year. So the statutory deadline, in essence, it's 315, but there's a lot of work that needs to happen prior to that. So we will have to dig down deep and look really closely at positions before we refill them. Next slide. So this is pretty significant. So the cost of living adjustment has has really, it really has been a roller coaster. So this is just, it's not just an analogy, it's really what's happened. So we've gone from an 8.22% for the current year to having a projected COLA for next year of 3.94%. But then that was just, it was pretty recently reduced to 0.76%. And so very significant cut. And there's there's talk from the LAO of not even funding that. So it could very well be zero. We'll just have to watch that very closely. So again, this will be very challenging for for school districts because it's really, it's it's a triple whammy. You have this reduction in the cost of living adjustment. You have the loss of COVID funds. And you have this enormous drop in ADA, which we'll talk about in the next series of slides. Go ahead, next slide. So again, we we won't know the actual COLA until budget adoption by the state. So we're going to look at this very closely. So likely, what we'll do is the business office might not even know the exact number when we adopt a budget because we're pretty close to being done with the budget in early May, by May revise. It takes a lot of work to get a budget, get a budget done. We're likely going to lean into a number less than 1% or even zero, depending on guidance. Next slide. So this is another slide to depict a budget challenge we have. So Maya Commiss District Charter Middle School has caused significant budget uncertainty. So enrollment in the charter school directly impacts district ADA and shifts revenues from the district to the charter. The charter originally had projected enrollment of 180 students for 2324, but they have approximately 70 students now. It goes between 70 and 75 and kind of goes up and down from what we've heard. Next slide. And so the Napa County Office of Education recently approved the Maya Commiss Countywide Charter. This will have an enormously negative impact on the district. So enrollment is projected to increase to 324 students over time. It will cost the district approximately $3.5 million annually. So it's it's a very significant cut that we'll have to make in adjustment to this. And so what we always have to do is, you know, when you're planning for a budget, you have to assume for the worst. We can't assume for the best here. We have to assume that they'll have full enrollment. And so we we will need to work these numbers into our budget. They are not currently in the budget. And as I mentioned earlier, it is too late to respond to that to this for this current year. And we will have to adjust for that next year. So again, one, the kind of two main things we're looking at is not filling some of the vacant positions that we have right now and reducing some program expenditures where applicable. Next slide. So another challenge we have is is one time funds. And so this is not unique to Napa Valley Unified. You know, the extent of the one time funds that school districts receive, it was, it was pretty substantial. School districts use this for a lot of things. And we use a lot of these funds to do what was recommended. We did use what was recommended, which was, you know, providing extra services to students that needed it most. And so the dollar amounts were so substantial that, again, school districts had to hire positions for them. You could not spend all this money on teacher hourly or contracts. It just wasn't possible. And so we do have some positions that are sitting in one times funds. Again, while we had hoped to make some of these extra services permanent, this, again, most likely will not be possible with the revenue outlook combined with the approval of Maya Commiss Countywide Charter School. So again, we we will have to look at these positions closely through which hopefully we'll be able to address them through attrition and and not do layoffs. Nobody wants to do that. But we'll have to look at this very closely for in the coming years and especially for during next year for the following year. Next slide. So what are some of the other things? So departments will need to make some difficult decisions and cut expenditures expenditures by using data, determine what's working, what isn't. This will have a significant impact on our discretionary contracts and expanded services that have been offered in response to the pandemic. Next slide. So this is probably one of the bigger challenges. It's a little bit more difficult to explain. We've talked about it a lot, but I haven't displayed it in this manner. So over the next series of slides, you will see a a concept. And I'll try and go slow, but I I'm sure you guys will get it, that you're a really smart board. But it's it's something that is kind of baffling when you look at it. So again, ADA or average daily attendance, it's based on the higher of the three year average ADA or the current year. And so as you recall, this is something that we did advocate for, wrote a letter for, and it got, ended up being turned into law where it's really benefited a lot of school districts. It especially benefited Napa Valley Unified School District. But if we go back in our Wayback Machine and you think about what happened during COVID, so COVID, March of 2020, they said, close your schools, right? It's going to be for two, I think they said, two, three weeks, flatten the curve. Don't worry, we'll give you the prior year's average daily attendance. We we all know we're closed longer than that. What happened over a series of budgets is everyone had their fixed average daily attendance from prior to the pandemic. That rolled forward for two years, but then those numbers became part of the three year average. So it was very beneficial to all all school districts in the state. All school districts in the state had the benefit of that three year average. And school districts with declining enrollment were funded at levels were actually higher than their enrollment, which you'll see in the next series of slides. Next slide. So this slide shows our funded ADA, very substantial drop. I'm sorry, the numbers are a little bit smaller. Actually, I had to write it down in my journal here. David? I'm expecting a comment, so. So it actually goes down from 1631 to 15190 or negative 1441 students. So very substantial, much higher than our rate of declining enrollment. Next slide. So this is where I do a comparison of enrollment loss to average daily attendance. So remember, what we're funded on is average daily attendance, not on enrollment, right? So when you look at the first slide, you can see the enrollment loss is negative 349 and the ADA change is negative 273. So that doesn't look too far out of whack. But then you look at the current year that we're sitting in, 2324, our enrollment change was negative 57, but our ADA change is negative 623. And so what that is, is that's that's the ADA falling off of the three year average. When you look at the course of a three year period, including next year, it's negative 1441. Or you can say, our enrollment loss versus our ADA, not quite three, maybe about three and a half, two and a half times it, but very significant loss in funding. And again, this is not unique to Napa. This is true for any district that has declining enrollment. We all had the benefit of that. And so what has that done? It just shows that these coming years that we have in front of us, there they're going to be some challenges. Next slide. So what this shows too, which is again, one of the slides where I was mentioning that things are, it's not normal. So when you look at the first slide, you can see, actually, we were funded at a higher rate than our enrollment. You can see that again in 2223. But then when you look at 2324 forward, you can see that, like, the enormous discrepancy between enrollment and funded ADA. Next slide. So what does that mean for us right now? It means that, again, our reserve percentage after our committed is is around 10%, 9.99%. Next year, we are projecting deficit spending. The year after that, we're also projecting deficit spending. So the business office always works really close to, you know, actually, I'd say, works very hard to adopt a budget that's balanced, meaning no deficit spending in the in the current year. However, it's it's going to be really difficult, given all these challenges. It might not be possible. So we'll just have to watch that really closely. And given that we don't have the ability to make cuts because the layoff deadline has passed, it's it's going to be a challenge, but we'll do our best with it. Next slide. So what are our assumptions in the budget? So again, large decrease in funded ADA due to rolling through your average and loss of COVID or fixed ADA in the three year average. The cost of living adjustment for purposes of what we have in the budget right now. So a COLA of 1%, 3.29%, and then 3.19% in the third year. Again, this is what we have at at Second Interim. We will be adjusting that when we get better guidance on that. It's just a little nuanced thing. So the LCF calculator, which is what we use for for projecting our revenues, you actually have to manually change the number. So we're actually, some school district might might use the higher number for the COLA, but we're always trying to be very conservative. And we go in there and we manually adjust it. Stepping column is equal to 1%. And then the final bullet is, at this point, we we have no funding put aside for a compensation formula. Things are really challenging. Hopefully, things will get a little cleaned up by the time we we get to budget adoption. It's one of the first years in a while that we haven't been able to put aside money for funding. So again, we'll just have to watch that very closely as we get closer to budget adoption. Next slide. So what are our recommendations and next steps? Approved positive certification of the budget. Both certified and classified cuts will need to occur in the in the immediate future. Will need to examine every vacant position closely. Pursue limited hiring freeze. Continue to be fiscally conservative. Prepare for node and negative revenue growth. That's always a possibility. If 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 the budget gets worse, there's always that possibility of having a a negative COLA. So that has been proposed in the past. It is possible. So it is not outside the norm to have something like that happen. Again, we have no ability to add new programs to the general fund or one time funds until the budget picture really becomes clear. So again, we're watching and anticipating what will happen next. Next slide. With that, I leave it open to questions.
Thank you very much. First, I'd like to ask if there are any public comments on this.
Comments on this item.
Thank you. Board? Go ahead.
So a couple of questions first. You mentioned cuts need to be made, but I just wanted to be clear. I think you said we're not planning March 15 letters. Is that right?
That is correct. Where there are, there are no March 15 letters. And so, you know, in any typical school year, we we do have a fair number of retirements. I would anticipate it could even be a little bit higher. Sometimes when you pay a cost of living adjustment, that's a significant one. And the next year, it's anticipate less. You get some of that pent up demand and and people actually retire in the in the current year. So we're watching that kind of closely. So the cuts would be in the form of not filling some positions.
All right. And then you said it was too late to respond to this drastic budget shortfall in our own budget for this year. But if the state comes in with less than 1% COLA, won't we have an opportunity to make reductions again for this coming year? A second opportunity?
Yeah, there's language in the in statute to do something like that, but actually executing on something like that is 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 very difficult. And I don't know, we would have to talk about that internally. So can you legally pull something off like that? Possibly, but actually delivering on something like that, I, at this point, I wouldn't recommend it. We have, we have, we have the ability right now to, because we we right sized our ship and and did this. We have reserves. So this is the kind of thing that we plan for, having the reserves that we have. It's not sustainable to always deficit spend. But if you have to deficit spend in because of a scenario like this, this is what it's for. So I would not recommend that.
As part of your presentation, you said departments will need to make difficult decisions and cut expenditures by using data to determine what is and isn't working. So a series of questions. When does this work begin? How far along are we on this path? How much is projected to be saved? And when is, can we as a board expect updates on this cost cutting?
So what what you'll see is you'll see that as part of budget development. So there won't be data presented until we actually adopt a budget. That hard work is happening right now. So in terms of some of those cuts you're seeing, probably the biggest impact that you're seeing is the expenditures in one time funds. And so we've had some very significant one time funds. We did talk about, we did a presentation, we discussed what our one time funds would look like at a previous board meeting. An example of that would be, you know, outside of the positions that are sitting in one time funds, departments that have historically had, you know, pretty significant dollars are going to have to plan for a lot less in terms of contracts. And so in extra things like teacher hourly, so that work is happening right now. So not, not, not in the general fund. So the, it's really what it, it will feel like a cut to departments, and it will be a cut essentially. When you're used to having one time funds to do extra things and add extra services, and then as those funds have, have the majority of them expiring at the end of this year, you have less opportunities to add these extra services.
Okay. And then on page 95, we're assuming a 1% student increase between first and second interim in year three for our ADA. What's the justification for that increase in ADA since first interim?
Yeah, that's a, that's a really good question. So there's, I have a couple of comments about that. So the first thing is a budget is is good at the moment that you that you create it. Then the the next day, things can change. Like, for example, that's that entire slide needs, or I should say, page needs to be redone because ADA will be dramatically different because Maya Commiss was approved. So the the whole whole slide and the out years are all incorrect now. They all have to be reduced. But why does it look like that? And why did you, why did you see that at a moment in time? So just so I could just paint a picture for the people who can't see page 95, I'll try and visualize it right now for y'all. So what what's page 95? It it has our ADA projection going down the columns. You have first interim and you have second interim. And then going across, you have the current year budget, you have next year's budget and the out year budget. And so what what that slide does is it's one of the criterion standards. It essentially points out things to the audience, meaning the public, you, the board, things that kind of like feel out of whack a little bit, right? And so one of the things that it called us out on, and which is within the norm, but we still put a comment down there explaining it, is that our, where we were, at first interim, we projected one set of ADA. At second interim, we projected a slight increase in year three. And so what that is, is every year, what we do is we go through enrollment projections with Rob Murray from King and Associates. We will, by the way, we will bring that report to the board again this year. And so he had a slight upward revision in enrollment due to TK and some of the building that's happening in American Canyon. And so what that resulted in is is me, when I, when Jenner and I, when we work on our budget, a slight increase in our enrollment with a slight increase of our average daily attendance projected for the third year. But that's no longer valid anymore.
And I think you already answered this, but it was, are those ADA numbers even valid in light of Tuesday's granting of MCMS's countywide petition?
Yes, and no, they're not. No longer accurate.
So I'm concerned that the LAO's prediction on the state of the economy and more specifically, the state budget is more likely than the optimistic or rosier numbers used by the governor. I believe we should operate as if things are going to get quite dire in the short term and plan our budget tightening accordingly. I'm urging the district to really follow through with the belt tightening mentioned in the report. The time to evaluate our various programs and see which ones to keep and which to cut is upon us. I'm hopeful that the bleak financial situation will not endure for the long run, but things are going to be difficult in the short term. As year two becomes budget adoption, I'm not comfortable with the type of deficit we're currently predicting, especially since I predict the financial outlook will be much more grim in the May revise. especially since I predict the financial outlook will be much more grim in the May revise. I urge the district to follow through on our staff reduction by eliminating those positions through the attrition process. And that ends my comments.
Thank you, Trustee Gracia.
Thank you, Trustee Gracia. You said some of the things I deleted as you went through, so this will be shorter. My comments about this budget, if you were to have asked me on Monday, would have been very different than my comments will be this evening. Mr. Mongualla was clear about the rationale behind potential cuts to the education budget and what that might look like for NVUSD. When there are unknowns and disparity in projections, it is difficult to determine what the financial reality will look like in May revise. We continually assess current and future impact of declining enrollment. We have continued to the best of our ability to prepare for economic uncertainty and the severity of the budget deficit while being smart and intentional in how we have spent our one-time monies. Yet the budget deficit is greater than projected. The hold harmless AD provisions are no longer in place, and the ADA enrollment comparison was startling. The funding average was stabilizing over the last three years, and that is now being absorbed into what is becoming a deficit with a potential below 1% COLA. And additionally, the Maya Comis approval will significantly impact our budgets as it shifts revenue from the district to the charter. And this is the financial backdrop we are up against. And I must comment, as it directly impacts this conversation, that the county CBO recommended approval of a charter that will negatively impact our budget. I question the recommendation from staff more than any other aspect of the process. The county office and CBO are tasked with examining and approving school district budgets and two interim reports in addition to ensuring our sound fiscal operation and to take specific actions if we are not able to meet our financial obligations. Riddle me this. Approving a charter does not align with ensuring our sound fiscal operation when I see operating deficits in years two and three. Financial oversight is supposed to be their area of competency and expertise, and for me, that is now in question. And for those in the community that might be listening that don't understand that this is a national issue, a state issue, and has clearly been outlined by Assistant Superintendent Mongualla this evening, a local issue, let me share a few headlines. Philly schools are projecting $407 million deficit. Fresno, California Unified facing $38 million budget deficit. Facing budget shortfall, San Francisco School Board votes to cut over 900 unfilled positions. Seattle School Board approves a plan to reduce $105 million deficit. Alaska School District projecting largest ever budget deficit. Houston-area schools facing multimillion-dollar budget deficits. And to solve $150 million budget gap, Memphis School District may cut 675 jobs. I could go on. Every statistic just mentioned has local impact. And we have a local county office that has added yet another additional layer of impact to NVUSD. So where does that lead us? Budget and eventual staffing cuts? Deficit spending is not an option. And while the state budget is a driver in these cuts, so is the added budget pressures imposed by NCOE. I imagine it is going to be very difficult for them to explain to us in the context of the financial auditing process, how to take appropriate action to manage our deficit spending when they have been a contributor. And that completes my report.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Trustee Reiser?
Yeah, I would piggyback on what Trustee Jankowicz just said. I can't help but notice the synergy of the previous presentation to this presentation to the, what I would consider a really misguided decision by the County Office of Education on Tuesday night. We heard about the importance of trustees being highly informed and having all of the information necessary to make impactful and difficult decisions. And to take on that role of being the one that makes difficult decisions that is going to leave some group perhaps angry or dissatisfied comes with the job. And I'm struck by the contrast from our incredibly competent and clear-spoken CBO here talking about the importance, how dangerous it is to overstate revenues, how important it is for us to plan for the worst and be prepared because we are in incredibly uncertain financial times. And then to go and watch two hearings at our county board in which the opposite was really taking place before my eyes. We were hearing the CBO give the benefit of the doubt over and over and over again to the charter petitioner's budget. Well, we're going to give them the benefit of the doubt here on their revenue projections because even though they fell, I had forgotten they had initially projected 180 for this year because they then adjusted that down to 150, and then they haven't even made it halfway this year. And yet, Mr. Schultz blithely felt confident in recommending approval of the budget that is full of benefit of the doubt. It just is astonishing to me. And I would just like to echo the phrase used earlier. It's an abrogation of their duty, both the county office superintendent and her staff to recommend approval of this charter petition that has put their largest district and their most poorly resourced district in financial exposure and vulnerability to a deeper level than we have already heard outlined in this grim report about what is facing public schools around the state and around the country. So I'll close with saying what I ran out of time to say in my comment to the county board, which is this is what happens when conversations about equity get uncomfortable for people who aren't used to being told no. And this is what happens when people in positions of governance are not willing to make themselves uncomfortable for the benefit of the students that they serve. So thank you, Mr. Mongualla, for not being among that kind of CBO that is unwilling to tell the hard truth to the people who are charged with making difficult decisions on behalf of the students of our community.
Thank you.
Trustee Chu?
So I have similar concerns about oversight of our financials from the NCOE because I see this as a repeat of what had happened in the past for NVUSD. I got interested in joining the school board because of the financial issues that it was facing in 2019. And all of a sudden, we were told that we weren't going to get a second middle school in ACMS 2. And how did we get there? And why was there no oversight for our school district to be able to do that? So I hope that we will do our own due diligence and really evaluate our own finances because I don't feel very comfortable that we will get any guidance from the county board. Or not the county board. I have to take that back because it feels like they are not really purviewed to whatever financials for us. But the Napa County Office of Education, because that's where the oversight of our budgets kind of reside, right? Unless we get a negative certification, then it goes to the county board for them to give whatever instructions in their jurisdiction. But I don't think that happened in 2017, 2018. And so I just want to make sure that our staff is on top of it for our own sake. Because I can't, I feel like this is just, history's repeating itself somehow. It just feels that way. And I don't want anyone else in our district, none of our students, to have to feel that again. So thank you for doing all the work that you're doing to make sure that we are all getting a reality check.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee McGrath, do you have anything to say?
I don't have much to say on this. This is beyond my area of expertise. I'm not in the, a lot of the, you know, financial discussions with all you guys. So I don't want to talk about anything that I'm not well-informed on.
Well, just keep your ears open. It's going to be affecting you for the rest of your life. How about trustee Gonzalez Morris?
I think for me, it's clear in your presentation from Assistant Superintendent Mongualla about our financials as it is each year when you present this to us. What's very hard for me, that it's just very clear when you're seeing a three-year projected budget and we're entering into deficit by, right? And so, and we've been working very hard to prevent that. And imagine where we would be if we had not made the decisions that we've had done in the past. It would be, we would be in far worse condition. We wouldn't even probably be able to do a lot of the things we've been accomplishing with what we've, little we've had to work with. We probably would have the state receivership at this point. I mean, it would be a very different story, almost like an alternate universe kind of story, not too far from us, in a neighboring district from us, right? So however, I still go back to thinking our role and responsibility. I know we're doing our due diligence here with our superintendent, our assistant superintendents, everyone. And right now, as I look at this again, and where does this information go, right? We try our best to communicate that to the public. And more so right now to other important governance bodies like NCOE. And to have trustees on the NCOE board say, the finances will sort itself out. And in fact, I haven't seen the NVUSD budget. I could probably look it up on the website. It's really concerning because then what have you been doing this whole time on that seat? What has your superintendent done in her responsibility to be able to inform, be transparent and clear about your largest district in the county? And you have a trustee saying that. That is to me, a complete irresponsibility. You are not doing your job as a superintendent. You are not doing your job as a trustee. And to also hear trustees that they want to vote with their heart. I understand that. I wish I could do that. But we have to also look at the data and the impact of that. Voting on your heart is absolutely a core thing to have. I get that. But if you don't have the information in front of you, then you're doing that blindly with tremendous ignorance. So, you know, I guess what's our practice at the school board is that we have this information. It's available. We talk about declining enrollment. And we'll just continue to do our part to communicate and educate the public. But I do just ask anybody who's listening to really take your time to understand, to reach out to us to understand what our budget is facing. Because even at the highest level of governance at the county office of, our county office of education here, to hear a trustee that's been there for a long time say she hasn't seen our budget is just, I, it's, I can't comprehend that. I just cannot comprehend that. So it's no questions, just comment and thanking the board here and the team for doing, helping us do our job. And I'm far more grateful that we are part of that here.
Thank you so much. If I could just add a comment to just kind of summarize everything that everyone said, just talk about that for a second. So, you know, the district, we've done a lot of really hard things in the last five years. Why did we have to do it? Because for years, it was ignored. We were deficit spending. We know the story. We got down to the verge of bankruptcy. We had to do some really, really hard things. And one of the things that I committed to when we did those hard things, we all did as a team, Dr. Mercedes, all of us, was that we were going to put systems in place. We don't have to do that again. And so we made a commitment that after we went through school closure, after we went through massive layoffs, we didn't want to have to do that again. And here we are right now. So we're here in March. All, we delivered on that. All the school districts around us, I'd say a lot of them, I can't use the word all, but a lot of them have massive, enormous layoffs, right? And so all through this entire year, the discussions in the executive cabinet around that has been, yep, we have a tough year coming up, but we've got systems in place. Dana and I have been really tight around this idea. It's like, no, we don't have to do any layoffs. We can just get this done through attrition. We've right-sized the district. Not only do we have the ability to do that, we have the ability to potentially continue some great programs. Now, the budget did turn around. And even though the budget turned around, like, you know, we knew that at first interim, so that was not a surprise. You know, we had the ability to do layoffs at first interim, but we made the decision not to do that because we have systems in place. But what we don't have systems in place for is if a county office suddenly approves a charter school that violates ed code and suddenly, you know, will allow for enrollment to go up to over 300 students. Now we're back to having to make massive adjustments for that staffing formulas don't take care of. You just don't know when it's going to happen or what's going to happen. And so then what are you back to? You're back to being in a situation where you have to cause a lot of distress in the system. What do I mean by distress? When you give layoff notices, people quit, quit, right? When you have to give layoff notices, you lose great employees, whether it's the certificate side, the classified side, or the management side. And so unfortunately, you know, again, if this thing goes as planned, we will be doing that again next year. And I feel really bad because it will impact a lot of people. And some people who are on the edge a little bit, like, they just might not come back to our profession. And it's hard enough to attract great employees. So it's really upsetting. So.
Trustee Gracia?
Yeah, as I sat and listened to my colleagues speak, I thought to myself, geez, we really probably should make some efforts to communicate with our parents and the community the dire budget situation that we're in so that they're aware, more aware. Because let's be fair, most of them are not online tonight listening to hear the news of this very critical and somewhat dire report. So I think we should make an effort to communicate to our parents and the community at large of the news of this very sad budget situation.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I agree, Trustee Gracia. And I think it should include the Office of Education's perspective on that, right? They have definitely some input to say since they voted on this on the Maya Comis. So what can be done there?
Yeah, I just, I want to thank everybody for their thoughtful reflections. Thank you to you and the business services team for preparing the second interim so thoroughly. I know, given the moving targets with the external factors, we've talked a lot about the charter school as a factor. You've had to make adjustments leading up to today's meeting. So I want to thank you for being, you and your team for being so adaptive and bringing the most pertinent data, the most real-time data that we have. You know, the idea of communication to parents in the community, we agree with that. We try and pride ourselves on effective communication. So we do have some explaining to do so that parents understand, you know, why we're spending any money on litigation. They need to understand, you know, the annual revenue loss, right? That comes with charter schools impacting your enrollment and understanding that if they hit their target enrollment, it'll be $3.4 million annually a year approximately. So, you know, making a small proportionally compared to that, a small investment in litigation in order to protect the district's resources is an investment in our students. I know that's difficult to kind of wrap our minds around, but we have to protect the resources for our 16,000 students. There's been a lot of chatter in the community around, it's, you know, we should just have small schools. They don't really impact the overall budget. We can understand the value that that adds for students who need something smaller and can appreciate that and do not want to be dismissive of the various needs and individual needs that students and families have across the system. And with that being said, you know, there is a finite. And with that being said, you know, there is a finite set of resources and we have to work within a framework because this idea of going back to small, operating small schools or middle schools of 100 or on the heels of doing rightsizing of the district and not following, you know, the, the concepts that emerged over the last couple of years because of declining enrollment, you know, the impact, that whole community impact concept, right, in Assembly Bill 1505 was this idea that with the declining enrollment in the state of California, this idea of just quantity of schools when there is a decline, a statewide enrollment decline, it just does not make mathematical sense and it erodes quality when you're just going for kind of, you know, massive quantity. And it's just not sustainable to operate small schools in the state of California. So, it, it's, it's a complex issue, so we'll have some explanations to families for sure around what the district's doing and why and how it's in the best interest of our students. Around communicating the budget scenario, I appreciate that suggestion and Mr. Mangual and I will discuss it. We do want to be cautionary because as we march towards May, we'll have even more accurate information, so we might want to wait until we get a little closer. We may signal what's on the horizon and then do a follow-up and/or series of communications as things get more specific and concrete as we go into the summer. So it may end up being a series of communications so that folks know that we're closely monitoring this roller coaster.
I would, I would say there's nothing, nothing wrong with a series of communications. More communicating is always better. Having said that, though, I don't, I don't think things are going to get better at May or July, it's going to be much, much worse, so we should prepare people for that.
Right, well, as a person who, you know, tries to look on the sunny side, I think I'm going with the Legislative Analyst's Office on this because I have a responsibility to be practical and look out for all eventualities. And we've got the deficit. I do appreciate everybody's comments. I think, and particularly trustee Jankowicz for bringing in, you know, the big picture because one, this is a very pleasant place to live and it's, we normally have nice weather and that sort of thing. I mean, we do live in this bubble and where, and our county is synonymous with the good life. And I think that sometimes, you know, people don't want to look outside past the county line, but this is happening all over the place. Just look next door to Sonoma, which, as I said, Tuesday night, they have, what, 51 charter schools and they have severe budget issues right now in Sonoma County. And the two, there has to be a relationship between the two. And I also was thinking while I was sitting there about what we went through when we closed the schools. It was not pleasant at all when we told American Canyon we weren't building a middle school. This is not anything that we do for fun. All of us were feeling quite wounded about it, but we did what had to be done for the greater good of our students. And, and it was very hard and apparently our sacrifice was not appreciated by the Napa County Office of Education. It's like, it's like we were so efficient in dealing with an emergency that I guess outside observers thought that it was easy. It was easy and we'll figure out something because we're so nimble and all that. So, I want to thank everybody's comments. I want to thank you for keeping us informed. It's not always fun, but knowledge is power. Thank you.
Thank you.
And after that festive presentation, we're going to move on to action items. K1, general services, adoption of California School Board Association's recommended policy updates, December 2023.
Move to approve.
Okay. Okay, motion from trustee Gracia, second from trustee, trustee...
Jankowitz.
Jankowitz, thank you. And, and do we have any, do we have any public comments, Mr. Michael?
We, we do not. There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, student trustee.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, two, business services, second interim 2023-24, that's 2A.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, the same, same old people, trustee Gracia and trustee Jankowitz. Mr. Michael, do we have any public comments on that?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student trustee.
Aye.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed, nobody. Okay, 2B, 2022-23 Annual Measure H Bond Audit Report.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, first by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Jankowitz. Mr. Michael, do we have any public comments on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student trustee.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, okay. Now, Resolution 2414, declaring property as exempt surplus land.
Move to approve.
Okay, we're going to need a roll call vote on this.
I'll second.
But I need a first and a second. Okay, so move to approve from, from Gracia and a second from trustee Jankowitz, roll call vote.
Student Board Member McGrath.
Aye.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Riser.
Aye.
Trustee Schu.
Aye.
Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Jankowitz.
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
I'm sorry, I should have asked for public comment. Are there any public comments on this?
We have none on this item.
None, okay, thank you. Okay, so 2, 2D, Resolution 2415, approving and authorizing superintendent to execute purchase and sale agreement and ESCO instruction with the town of Yountville.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, so first from trustee Gracia, a second from trustee Jankowitz. Are there any public comments on this, Mr. Michael?
No public comment on this item.
Okay, so we need a roll call vote.
Student Board Member McGrath.
Aye.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Riser.
Aye.
Trustee Schu.
Aye.
Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Hart, I'm sorry, trustee Jankowitz.
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we have K2E, purchase of transit vans for technology.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion from trustee Gracia, second from trustee Jankowitz. Any public comments, Mr. Michael?
No public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student trustee McGrath.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Thank you. Three, human resources, A, this is a resolution, 2411, human resources, release of temporary certificated employees. Mr., I need a motion.
Move to approve.
I will second the motion.
Okay, for, motion from trustee Gracia and a second from trustee Jankowitz. Do we have any public comments?
There are no public comments on this item.
Okay, do we have any comments from the board?
Yes, thank you. I just, in light of the conversation that we just had about budget cuts and layoffs and also the difficulty in attracting and retaining teachers in this profession, I just wanted to take a moment to thank temporary certificated employees that are on this list that we are having to vote to let go today. I know that feeling of getting that RIF notice and it's a real blow, even if you know it's only because of your seniority. It's very, very hard for young teachers starting out. It's a hard job to begin with and then you have sort of employment instability because you're always lowest on the totem pole. I know that doesn't apply to everybody necessarily. (audio cuts out) ...difficult job, so I just wanted to express my gratitude for their hard work.
Thank you, thank you. We all do. And so, we're going to need a roll call vote on this.
Student Board Member McGrath.
Aye.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Riser.
Aye.
Trustee Schu.
Aye.
Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Jankowitz.
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you. 3B, classified calendars for years 2024-2027.
Move to approve.
I will second the motion.
Motion from trustee Gracia, second from trustee Jankowitz. Student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
Okay, oh wait, I should ask for public comments, sorry. Are there any public comments for this? Mr. Michael?
There are no public comments.
Okay, thank you. Student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay, thank you, it passes. Let's see, 3C, McCormick Barstow LLP Legal Agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion from trustee Gracia, second from trustee Jankowitz. Are there any public comments on this, Mr., Mr. Michael?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, thank you. And four is instructional services, 4A, 2023-24, school plan for student achievement addendums.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, motion from trustee Gracia, second from trustee Jankowitz. Mr. Michael, are there any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Negatives, I mean, excuse me, opposed? None? Okay, it passes. 4B, agreement with John Renee Dance Academy.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, motion from trustee Gracia, second from trustee Jankowitz. Mr. Michael, are there any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Trustee, student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nobody. Okay, and now we're at 4C, agreement with Nature Bridge Contract for Environmental Science Programs.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion from Gracia, second from Jankowitz. Mr. Michael, do we have any public comments on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Thank you. And we are at 4D, agreement with educational destinations.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, it's a motion from trustee Gracia, second from trustee Jankowitz. Mr. Michael, do we have any public comments on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you, sir. Student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nobody. Okay, let's see. Five, operational services, contract with CASCO Door and Lock.
Move to approve.
I will second.
Okay, motion from trustee Gracia, second from trustee Jankowitz. Mr. Michael, do we have any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nobody. And 5B, surplus equipment.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion from trustee Gracia, second from trustee Jankowitz. Mr. Michael, are there any public comments on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. And 5C, annual transportation plan.
Move to approve.
I will second.
Motion from trustee Gracia, second from trustee Jankowitz. Mr. Michael, are there any public comments on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Okay, six is school planning and construction. This is Resolution 2413, authorizing individual signors associated with SAB-administered programs, SPC hashtag 8.1-24.
Move to approve.
I will second.
Okay, a motion from trustee Gracia, a second from trustee Jankowitz. Mr. Michael, are there any public comments on this?
There are no public comments on this item.
No public comments. This will be a roll call vote.
Student Board Member McGrath?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Riser?
Aye.
Trustee Schu?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowitz?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you. 6B, SPC 18.96-20, contract with FIT Environmental for hazardous materials testing.
Move to approve.
I will second.
Okay, motion from trustee Gracia, second from trustee Jankowitz. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comments on this?
There are no, excuse me, there are no public comments on this item.
All right, thank you. We need a roll call vote for this.
No, we don't.
Wait, no, I'm sorry, we don't because I didn't use my ruler to keep track of it. Okay, great, so we don't. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Trustee McGrath?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Any, well, any opposed? Nope, let's keep going. Okay, sorry. 6C, SPC 18.97-20, agreement with Metropolitan Van and Storage for move services.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, and thank you, that is a motion from trustee Gracia, second from trustee Jankowitz. Any public comments?
There are no public comments on this item.
Nope. Okay, no public comments. Student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you. Okay, now we are on 6D, SPC hashtag 21.53-17, agreement for stormwater pollution prevention plan services with stormwater specialists.
Move to approve.
I will second.
Okay, a motion from trustee Gracia, second from trustee Jankowitz. Mr. Michael, do we have any public comments?
There are no public comments on this item.
Okay, thank you. Student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nobody. Okay, informational. One, general services, curriculum and student support committee.
Report is attached.
Yes, they're all attached and finance will be attached next week.
Finance will be attached next week. Okay, but you know, I have to ask. Okay, A, so they're all, okay, fine, we'll move on to business services. A, enrollment report, it's here, thank you. And any comments on this? Any pub, excuse me, do we have any public comments on this?
There are no public comments on this item.
Okay, thank you. And let's see, M, additional suggestions and comments from board members and superintendent. I have one. Okay, I just want to acknowledge that Ruder Bob died. Actually, we've lost some great, we have lost some very nice people, Ms. Plowman, Mr. Mike Brown, and Ruder Bob, look, I worked with him for five years before he even, I even knew his last name. He was just Ruder Bob. But for the record, his name is Bob Zanardi. And he was, had a big heart, loved the kids. I told someone, he showed up at so many sports events, you know, there are students who play sports and their own parents can't come to see them and Bob seemed to know who they were. He always told the kids how well they did and they looked forward to seeing him, you know? So, God bless.
Names.
Yep, he knew, he knew their names. He knew everybody's name on campus. I mean, God, God blessed Bob Zanardi, he was a great human being. He brightened people's lives.